Roll call.
Harding.
Here.
Melton is absent, Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Ben Gray of District Two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, let me say, first of all, let me say that seems like sometimes I'm up here and I'm talking about individuals who have passed on, who have been extremely valuable to our community. And in particular, in this instance, to the black community. And I'm talking about Marshall Taylor, who passed, this past Tuesday. His funeral services are Saturday. He was the proprietor of the Afro-American bookstore. And I don't know how many have ever been or been to the Afro-American bookstore, but that was one of the greatest wealths of information. One of the best places to go to have significant discussion about issues that we're going, like what we're going to have today. Marshall was just a valuable, valuable person in our community, and he is going to be sorely missed. And I wanted us to take some time to reflect on Marshall and his contributions to this community. Because today, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have a discussion about racism. And we're going to have a serious discussion about racism. And I'm going to push that discussion about racism. So today, if you would, please for me just for a few seconds, let's just reflect on the life and the contributions of this excellent individual, Marshall Taylor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the East Wall Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. I see a number of you standing, and I appreciate the fact that the space in the existing infrastructure of chairs is limited in terms of maintaining social distancing. There are stacks of chairs on the upper levels. If you wish to be seated, we would encourage you to do so in a distanced way. We thank you again for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance, in order to conduct and facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six and seven are resolutions to approve the implementation of dockless shared scooter operation agreements with spin and bird. And just a reminder, the first vote will be on the reconsideration, and then the second vote will be to approve the items.
Just as a reminder to council, if the reconsideration vote passes, then the next item will be up. The public meeting has already, or public hearing has already been held on that item. For a member of the public to testify, a council member would have to recognize that person and call them to the mic. What's the pleasure of the council on item six?
We already have the motion and second, it's just the vote.
Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed four to two. Can we get the vote on?
I will call. Is there anyone who came here today thinking that you had a public hearing on the scooters? I thought I saw a constituent up there, but, okay. Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed four to two. Item eight, a resolution to provide a public platform to engage citizens in a discussion of positive action steps to address racism, injustice, inequality, economic disparities, and police-community relations.
Councilmember Festerson, in lieu of coming to the podium to introduce your resolution, you're recognized from where you're seated.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this moment of personal privilege. By way of introduction of this resolution, I just wanted to repeat what I discussed a few weeks ago at our meeting, which is, I think it's important to continue this conversation we're having about some tough issues. And to engage our residents on topics of racism, and economic disparity, and inequality, and police-community relations. And to provide a forum, in this forum, to discuss those things, and not only discuss them and listen about them, but develop action steps. And I want folks to know I'm committed to doing that. I think my fellow councilmembers are too. But today, the intent is to get additional thoughts from folks that I've been talking to over the last few weeks. And I've had the privilege of having some conversations with several folks involved, for example, with the Hundred Black Men, Partnership for Kids, Girls Inc., North Star, and Avenue Scholars, amongst other groups that I think are here today with representatives to discuss and address these topics. So I just wanted to give that brief introduction before I think those folks address us, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. We'll now open the public hearing on item number eight for any proponents, those in favor of this item. And we had a sign-in process. The first person is Lionel Quinn. If you could come to the microphone, please tell us your name and address, and your testimony, please. And we'll have three minutes per speaker. The green light will illuminate to begin your time after you introduce yourself with your name and address. A yellow light will come on when you have one minute remaining, and at the red light, that means your time has expired. And we will be enforcing that today to allow the many people who have come the opportunity to be heard. As someone is giving their testimony, we ask that you respect that the time is uniquely the speaker's, so that we may devote our attention to that person and only the person speaking. Please refrain from applause or things that could detract from the attention to the speaker. Please proceed.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Lionel Quinn, and I live on 144th and Giles. Excuse me, I have my phone here because I do understand it's always good to have your own devices when you go on live and all of that, you know. Today, I want to talk to you about peace with a twist. But before I start, I just want to ask everyone around this room, just by a show of hands, how many of you really passionately want to see the ending of racism? Like honestly, just how many of you, just raise your hand.
Lionel, the rules of the council require that you address your remarks to the council, not to the audience.
I understand that, sir, but the issue is, it's not just the council's issue, this is for the city. Understood. So, now, I know this is just something that we all know about. But like Councilman Gray said, that we need to discuss this issue and have a strong discussion of this issue. Now, I'm not from here, let me make that clear. I'm from Detroit, Michigan. I've been here for quite some time now. But I want you to know that I've been to about three protests in the last week, this weekend, when it came to injustice, no justice, no peace. How long have we been hearing, no justice and no peace? It hasn't been today that you first heard it. It hasn't been before. It was before I was born, probably before my mother was born, before my grandmother was born. But why now? Why are we looking to address the issue now when this should have been done a long time ago? Now, this is not just to the city council, but this is also to every viewer that lives in the United States of America. For all of us that are affected by the nasty, haunting, generation-to-generation issue, and that's racism. How are we going to actually do something about this if we continue to have politics as usual? Because here's the thing, racism makes money. Division makes money. It does because you have redlining. You have these things because we've taken out busing, we've taken out affirmative action, and thank God, I do see that back on the, back on the agenda. And I'm not going to be before you long, but I just want you to just follow me, which is for a few things. For the same generation, our children is going to end up having to repeat the same cycle if we don't make the changes that we need to. Our grandchildren are going to end up having to wake with the same cycle, but we want justice, we want peace with a twist. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me up there? I just want to make sure I was loud and clear. So how long and how much more would it take? When is enough enough? When would the bloodshed and tears be charged in and we actually say, and actually not only just say, but do the things that we say we're going to do? Not just patching it up like a Band-Aid. This is an issue that's been going on for years. And when are we really going to take it serious? How are we going to take it serious? Resolutions don't fix the issue. It's what's inside that fixes the issue. And I know my time is up.
Thank you, your time's expired. The next speaker is Jamal Hunter.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. And, all right, I hear running for mayor, though. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to start with whatever I typed up. On May 29, 2020, I began protesting with my mother. I have watched Omaha police officers taunt to get me to jump over the line full of police officers with riot gear on. The police officer that was taunting me decided to flip me off and continuously did it. Then on May 30, 2020, I watched a police officer push my mother in the back while she was standing on the sidewalk. Yeah, yes, sir. Would you like me to restart, or?
Just raise the mic a little bit. We'll start your time over.
Okay.
Yeah, even though you've signed in with your name and address, please repeat your name and address.
Jamal Hunter.
After you do that, then he'll start your time.
Okay. Jamal Hunter. I live on 9935 S Plaza, or, yeah. On May 29, 2020, I began protesting with my mother. I have watched Omaha police taunt me to jump the line full of police officers with riot gear. Then the police officer that decided to taunt me decided to flip me off and continuously did it. Then, then, on May 30, 2020, I watched police officers push my mother in the back while she was standing on the sidewalk. My mother has had back surgery years ago. I also, I also was kicked by a police officer while I was sitting on the curb. They, they also shot about six to seven tear gas canisters toward the corner of 72nd and Cass Street. And then made the protesters walk through it. And when we tried to walk, go around, we just were pushed into it. Then the protesters moved downtown. Where I was, on my knees with my hands up, chanting, "Hands up, don't shoot", in front of officers with riot shields and riot gear on. I watched, I watched, I watched as they raised their pepper ball and tear gas guns and began shooting at us, which caused chaos in the streets. I also ran into James Skirlock, who thanked me and my mother for standing for standing up for the injustice going on in this world. We proceeded to run backwards and witnessed two teenagers throw a gun into the high window. And no, it was not James Skirlock. We kept moving down the street due to police officers shooting tear gas and pepper balls. Then minutes later, we heard gunshots. The minutes later, we heard gunshots. And two teenagers running past told us that there was, somebody got shot by a bar owner. Didn't realize till the next day that it was James Skirlock, who did not deserve to die. I will continue to stand for the injustice in this city. No one in this world is perfect. We all make mistakes, but we should not be judged on how our mistakes, on our mistakes. No one ever seeks to understand why someone ever made this mistake or that mistake. There is almost always contributing factors that cause someone to make a mistake.
We're going to need you to wrap up, and we will make your complete written remarks part of the record as well.
I'm here as an African-American in the city of Omaha, who is a star football player. But because I suffer from severe ADHD, I am not, I can't even, like, sit in a classroom that is an hour and 30 minutes long. And I had a target on my back when I went to school from past years, or whatever. And then the teachers never really, really thought of, oh, let me see what this kid is, or did he change, or did he, is he still that same way or anything? They just assumed of my records from school, if, they just went off of that. So they just automatically thought I was bad. And so, that would, uh, that would occur, and I would probably be in the office probably like four or five times a day, and just on things that should be talked about with the student and not really like, oh, just go to the office, go to the office, go to the office. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. The next proponent is Shaykel Butler.
Do you guys hear me? Name and address, right?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody, my name is Shaykel Butler. I live on 2603 Irving Court, Apartment F. As I said, my name is Shaykel Butler, and I'm here today as a representative and product of Partnership for Kids, as well as a recent graduate of the UNO Theater Program. I'm also a lifelong resident of North Omaha, so it goes without saying that I've experienced firsthand the disparities that exist in a predominantly black and brown community. Disparities such as the lack of proper revitalization in neighborhoods and buildings in multiple low-income areas of North Omaha. Buildings such as the ones on 41st and Hamilton through Military Avenue, 24th and Lake, and so on. Areas that have properly rehabilitated can create jobs and generate income for North Omaha, as well as residents close to home. Areas that have properly handled can be used to create recreational areas that produce more productive or positive community interactions and engagements. And I'm not just talking about parks, but tennis courts, basketball courts, golf courses, as well as indoor facilities that promote family-oriented activities. And I feel this type of inclusive thinking will benefit our community greatly. Now, as a black man in this community, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the massive civil unrest going on in our country today. I, for one, believe that black lives matter.
Yes, sir. Please respect the rules.
I, for one, believe that black lives matter, and that should be shown through our justice system. The deaths of Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, and many others at the hands of law enforcement are unacceptable and should be addressed as such. That being said, while I appreciate the Omaha Police Department, I feel that a systematic change is long overdue. I believe that this is possible through more education and training, specifically in psychology, and dismantling racial bias. I believe this is possible by investing in more neighborhood organizations to positively assist with conflict resolution within that community. I also believe that true healing will only begin when there's assurance to citizens that any police misconduct will be handled swiftly and with the utmost importance to the fullest extent of the law. Omaha has a long way to go to solve its inequality problem, but I'm confident that change is coming, and I hope that we can be a part of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is proponent Michelle Butler.
Shaykel Butler, oh, sorry, Michelle Butler, 6402 North 95th Court. This is my son. I came to support him, but I just graduated with my social work degree. And I believe, although I didn't come here to say anything in particular, I believe that we have to look at racism and the social injustices that's going on as not a political factor, but we need to look at that as just the human aspect of it. I feel like it's getting too politicized. The Black Lives Matter movement is too politicized. I believe that we need to look at the behaviors and things within the African-American community as a mental health issue. I work at the Center for Holdings Development. I work with inclusive communities. There are ways for us to treat this issue. The upbringing, what is it, building the new juvenile detention center is not going to solve our problem. We're trying to build a center that's going to house more juveniles instead of look at the issue as an issue. And I just feel like that's one of the things that I wanted to say, because I just feel like that is some areas that we really need to improve on. At my center, it's an African-American-run, CEO-founded center, and there is not enough youth coming through there to take advantage of the services that's available to them. So I just think that we need to look at this aspect of it and not politicize it so much. So that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Williams.
I am Andre Williams. I live at 7521 Military Ave, and I am here on behalf of North Star. All I have to say is that the best way to make change happen is to inform the people and for political leaders to be informed by the people. So discussions like this need to happen more often. These discussions are small steps, but many small steps make a bigger step. And sorry, I just need to find my words. So each small step is working towards a single goal of eradicating racism. Racism has been in the American history since the beginning. It's been here since slavery, and it's still here today. But it's not slavery, it's just systematic racism and how people think of other people. It is human nature for people to divide themselves and see people that are the same. We need to break that human nature and find people as people. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Webb.
Hello, councilmembers. Richard Webb, 841 Avenue P, Carter Lake, Iowa, 51510. I stand up here today, not with anything written, but just speaking from the heart. I have the luxury of serving my community in the form of being the biggest kid within the 100 black men of Omaha. And I want to thank Ben Gray and also Pete for allowing the youth these days to come up and have this forum, to be able to speak their truths. I'm a firm believer that what our mission is, is to help our youth to be respectful, responsible, and the next generation of leaders. The only way for them to be able to implement that is if we continuously work on the issues in front of us, making sure that we address them, not putting patches on them or Band-Aids, but actually systematically addressing them and improving our community, so that when they are respectful, responsible, and ready to lead, like Jamal was, he doesn't have to put up with issues that confront him, as such as officers who serve and protect kicking him, officers who serve and protect pushing his mother, because specifically in the African-American history or the culture, we're very firm and protective over our mothers or grandmothers. So of course, with that being said, just like Jamal so eloquently stated, the challenges behind that are, we get into a defensive mode. And of course, when you have a defensive mode as a person, but then you also have a defensive mode as someone trying to protect and serve in the right manner, those can bring up challenges that we no longer want to see in the future. So I didn't get up too much to say a lot, but I did want to say thank you all for, first of all, allowing this platform, but also continuously having these conversations and not just putting Band-Aids, but systematically looking at ways we can address our community, so that when our youth are ready to speak and are ready to lead, we give them that platform, we take their initiatives, we factor those into decisions that we make, and not only how they impact our bottom line, but getting out of a time of just doing something and actually getting into a time of sacrifice that will only be beneficial for the next generations to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Harris.
Good afternoon, city councilmembers. My name is Jasmine Harris. I live at 5014 Pratt Street. From the state to county to local government, private and public businesses, we need to eradicate the systemic, systematic, and institutional injustices that continue to permeate these systems. We're talking about racism, and a lot of people only deal with racism at an individual level. We have to begin to look at the systematic, the systemic, the institutional racism in order to move anything forward. This can start with the elected leadership. Recommendations are out there. Like I told Nebraska Legislature, things have been mentioned all the time. Center the voices, stories, experiences, and expertise of people of color. That's the first step. Reach out to us to attend meaningful, strategic planning meetings that will result in action steps. Thank you for this platform, but let's do this in a setting where action versus time-limited conversations are the end goal. Let's start with the models of our state. Nebraska is not for everybody. Self-explanatory. Overt racism that we've endured. The one before that, Nebraska nice. The covert racism that we've endured, but are gaslighted about because majority says we're not racist, but do nothing to be anti-racist. In order to address these issues, let's start here in our own backyard. How can we expect people to take this work seriously when we continue to be alienated from the top down? Thank you.
Thank you. Jamar Dorsey.
Jamar Dorsey, 2615 North 32nd Street. Thank you for the platform and opportunity this afternoon. My direct day job is Director of Community Engagement for the Avenue Scholars Foundation. Much like the other nonprofits represented here today, we work directly with students who are impacted by racism, injustice, inequality, economic disparities, and police brutality throughout our city. And on the drive over here, I was talking to two of our current Avenue Scholars, and they were going through what they wanted to say. And once we got here, they realized that the platform wasn't one they wanted to participate in today. And so I only say that to say that modeling what we want to see in our community is so very important. And that's why I decided to stand up and model the things we want to see. and model the things we want to happen. So to make real impact and to have real change, first, us adults, us who work with the most vulnerable populations, us who work with the most influential populations, we must model what we want to see, and we must model what we want our city to look like. And what is it going to take to do that? One, having critical and courageous conversations about things that make people uncomfortable and respecting and understanding perspective and positions. Two, educating all of us, both young and old, on how we got here, but most importantly, on what we can do in the current moment. And then three, no different than what many people have said today, what does action look like? And we all have a role to be an active participant in addressing these issues and taking steps to solve these issues. But what does that action step look like? What does it look like here on the local level? What does it look like in the educational realm? What does it look like in the nonprofit realm? And how can we take that step together, as the young man said earlier? So the first step for me today was simply to model what we want our youth and young people to do as we make steps towards creating a better Omaha for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proponent is Emma Bitterman. Holly Lukasiewicz, you're on deck.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, my name is Emma Bitterman from 11281 South 200th Street, Gretna, Nebraska. I've had the pleasure of being a part of the Girl Scout organization for 10 years now. I'm an ambassador with the Spirit of Nebraska Council along with the Girl Scout Advisory Group for Omaha. Thank you for giving me this opportunity today to respond to the need for racial justice. I will first acknowledge that I will never understand what it's like to be discriminated against based on the color of my skin, but I'm here today as an ally to the Black Lives Matter movement explaining issues I've witnessed in our communities. I'd like to now address the pledge Girl Scouts USA has taken to stand against racism. Our organization plans to form a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force at the national level that works to include every girl in all conversations. Change also begins from within, so Girl Scouts USA is committing to strengthening hiring practices to reflect our communities, just as Nebraska should also. Now I will address some of the current events happening nationally. Recently, NASCAR prohibited the display of the Confederate flag from all events and properties. Many other states are also taking action to remove the symbol from public places. The Confederate flag is a representation of hate, fear, and exclusion. If we want change, all communities need to be aware of the pain this symbol causes our citizens. Nebraska must also take action on removing the Confederate flag, specifically within our education systems to promote racial justice. A school is supposed to be a safe, accessible, and quality environment that fulfills students' needs, leading them into the adult world. Through the three years I've gone to my school, I've witnessed on many accounts students wearing the Confederate flag's design on multiple types of clothing. My friends have even come to me saying that makes them feel uncomfortable and unwelcome. And just because our school is not as diverse as others and smaller doesn't mean we can dismiss the fact that this flag is extremely offensive and construes hate. Our state's schools have to take action on this. Another problem that needs to be addressed is our history classes. For example, in school, I was never taught about Juneteenth and its significance. If bias already begins with a child's education, it will follow them into adulthood. History must be taught unbiased and from all possible perspectives. Many people stray away from uncomfortable conversations like these today, but we need these to happen more, and they're a necessity to make change. Lastly, these issues I mentioned today are just the tip of the iceberg. Our leadership cannot wait for lives to be taken to make a change. Sustainable change happens when leaders take that initiative themselves to end racism and systematic oppression. Black Lives Matter is not just a phase, it's a revolutionary movement that needs to continue, and we must not let these vital voices be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Lukasiewicz?
My name is Holly Lukasiewicz, 4902 Cass. Thank you all for your time and service to the Omaha community. I am asking for you to vote in support of Resolutions 677 and 678. Although these are policy shifts that can be made towards racial justice in our community, this weekend I witnessed very concerning parts of Omaha leadership that exemplify the work yet to be done in this community. The first was the rally outside Mr. Klein's home on Saturday. He showed a lack of respect for his constituents, using offensive language, and aggressively approaching two members of the crowd and yelled in their faces. His wife even tried to pull him back. The second was at the Support the Blue Rally. A less polarizing approach to such a rally could have been chosen by OPD, instead choosing to re-fame it as "Blue Supports Black Lives", to acknowledge and say "Black Lives Matter". Many of the speakers during the rally only told one side of the story. With that said, I am grateful to read about the policy and procedure changes that are being made to OPD beginning this month. They are a start, but there is more to be done to undo Omaha's racist institutional policies. That is why I am urging the city council, mayor, and OPD to enact the "Eight Can't Wait" use-of-force policies. Omaha has two that are part of the "Eight Can't Wait" pledge. Can you commit to enacting these additional policies? Number one, ban all chokeholds and strangleholds, including kerated restraint control holds. Number two, require de-escalation. Hire more for OPD's crisis response team so there is more than one crisis response member at each precinct. Number three, exhaust all alternatives before shooting, or better yet, take away their guns, like Iceland, Ireland, Norway, New Zealand, and the United Kingdom. According to the police shooting database and the FBI statistics on law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty, for every police death, the police have shot or otherwise killed approximately 20 citizens, mostly people of color and unarmed, each year for the past four years at the national level. In other words, it's way more dangerous to be a civilian than a police officer, especially a civilian of color. Duty number four, duty to intervene. Stop excessive force. Have all response by OPD be met with a trauma-responsive mental health professional. Number five, ban shooting at moving vehicles. Again, make OPD weaponless, like Iceland, Ireland, Norway, New Zealand, and the United Kingdom. Number six, require comprehensive reporting. May we all be open to knowing more in our efforts towards racial justice in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, with anyone, if you have additional remarks, you may always submit them to the clerk, and they will be made part of the record. Luis Jimenez?
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. I'm supporting the resolution. I think this is a unique opportunity that the council is offering the community. And I haven't noticed something like this in the past, so that's why I say it's unique. I'm assuming you're using the public hearing that goes with the resolution as the platform. But there are a lot of discussions that would be happening outside of city council. And one of those things that I hope you guys and the community talk about is reallocating funds from the police department to other services that can effectively tackle issues and conflict resolutions that the police officers generally do, but may be ill-equipped to handle, for example, mental illness or mental health issues. Over in Chicago, they have police officers who are social workers. And I think that's something in the right direction, an idea in the right direction. So what we're doing is having these discussions, and we're finding language or finding ways to promote ideas, make sense of recourse. So I appreciate that. Defunding the police is something that's been talked about a lot, but I think we need to move beyond that and talk about, like, reallocation of funds so that we're not just throwing money at the police. You know, send them out, and what we get is what we have to accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy O'Connor? Michaela Chambers, you're on deck.
I'm Joy O'Connor. My address is 6017 Pacific Street. I have been an active participant of the Justice for James Skirlock movement outside of Don Klein's neighborhood. I'd like to share some of the racism I've witnessed in our beautiful city. I was horrified. Maybe I'm sheltered because I live in the midtown area, and I spend most of my time in the midtown area, and I interact most with midtown people. So I was shocked by the things I saw out there. I had a white woman pull over and tell me that James got his justice. I was so shocked, I asked her what she was referring to, and she smiled, laughed, and said, "He died." I had a white older woman write a letter to our group with no information to respond to tell me I should use my time picking up trash instead of disturbing her peace. I had a white man tell me our signs would be better if they said "Hang Them." We had trucks with "Blue Lives Matter" Confederate and American flags pull over to try and intimidate us. Sometimes they would yell at us to get a job. Sometimes they would yell at us that "All Lives Matter." One time, they pulled over in the neighborhood, and police officers were called and tried to tone things down. But they ended up staying there the rest of the night, saying that they were visiting a friend in the neighborhood who actually we saw leave the neighborhood. So none of that was true. They made fun of us as we left, making fun of the way we walked. I had several white men get so angry at us for supporting life for our black neighbors that they threw water bottles at me. And one of these nights, I had my daughter there. Another time, a truck drove by while we were looking up the license plate of another truck that had almost run into one of us as we crossed the street with a walk sign, with a pedestrian sign. Another truck slowed down and threw a full beer can at me, and it was popped open. So I assume it was open in his truck, and he threw it at me. It was still cold. I had women cry to us about their peace being disturbed because we would get there at 6:00 in the morning and demand justice for James from 6:00 to 8:00 every morning. And these women were finding it hard that they weren't able to use their decks this summer without hearing us protesting. And I just really wished that they would take the energy that they were pointing at us and wanting us to be quiet and point that towards Don and ask him to get justice for a murderer that's still on the loose, that he could still charge. I heard from two older white men that they protested this stuff back in the '60s, and they both insinuated that that was enough and that we needed to give up trying to improve the state of racism because it's good enough. It's not good enough. I had a white woman... Am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have more I could share with you, but I guess that's enough.
Thank you. Michaela Chambers? Amy Casey or Carrie, you're next.
I'm short. Can you all hear me? My name is Michaela Chambers. I live at 9611 North 29th Street. Pete, I'm in your district. I am in support of Resolution 0677. As we are all aware, Omaha, Nebraska has been behind the curve as far as being a progressive city. When I say I'm from Omaha, Nebraska, when I'm in a larger city, they often ask if we shuck corn as our main jobs here. So we have this unique opportunity to finally be progressive on a countrywide problem rather than being years behind the curve, as is historically known to Omaha. You all have been doing this job for many years and are, right now, seeing for the first time your constituents here showing up bravely in droves, taking time off from their jobs to demand change. You all either listen to us, who represent large sectors of this county, to come up with effective strategies and solutions to combat racial injustice against the black community, which has perpetuated in Omaha for more than a century, as you all know, or we will vote you out. North Omaha, South Omaha, Dundee, Blackstone, and Benson will unite to vote in council members that passionately represent us and to seek to combat racial inequality and injustice. This fight is far from over. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Amy? Carrie?
Hi, I'm Amy Carrie. I live at 2129 Ridgewood Avenue. I've spent time at the University of Nebraska-Omaha studying the sociology of technology. I was sworn in last year as a CASA court-appointed service advocate where racial and economic disparities are at the center of the foster care system. Thank you for your time today. I'd like to start off by saying that I'm in full support of "Eight Can't Wait" initiative. I'm in full support of anyone representing the importance of funding our underserved schools so that children all across our city, not just parts of it, have the same access to technology in terms of computers, power books, and appropriate resources, not just for distance learning, but for conventional times as well. We all have different strengths and lanes to focus on positive action steps to address economic disparities. And the lane I'm here to discuss is the digital highway that those initiatives rely on and the digital divide that stands in the way. The digital divide is an uneven distribution in access to, use of, or impact of information and communication technologies. I'm here to implore that the city council begin creating a budget that would include the architecture of municipal wireless network. Beginning in the neighborhoods, we're systemically deprived of economic growth and infrastructure through redlining practices. The Union for Contemporary Arts has clearly outlined a direct correlation between the redlined neighborhoods and the majority of those affected by COVID-19. Addressing the digital divide can lead to economic growth and wage increases, easier access to medical care, lower-cost online education, and job opportunities. While cellphone technology was believed to bridge these gaps, they're only a small part of that solution. Smartphone technology provides access to content consumption and information, but little capability of content creation. When did you last write out a report, fill out a job application, or consume volumes of texts for education or professional purposes solely on your phone? Wireless infrastructure is required to provide the highway for success of communities to develop and sustain themselves economically, socially, and physically. Can any of you identify a more important municipal capability? Broadband infrastructure is in the same category as electricity and water. Not one of us here today arrived without using it, and not one of us will further our goals here today without it. To quote the Pew Research Center, "There may have been a time when high-speed internet could be considered luxury, but now it is a necessity and indispensable tool for information and communication. Modern classrooms require students to have internet access. Hospitals and law enforcement track and transfer records using the internet. Businesses rely on it for daily commerce." While I'm not telling you things that you don't already know, I'm asking you to acknowledge that our city has deliberately underserved our minority populations and the neighborhoods that they live in, and I'm urging you to begin the development of free public Wi-Fi as a utility in those neighborhoods first instead of last. The United States consistently receives a D-plus on infrastructure readiness reports from the American Society of Civil Engineers. There are several examples of cities undertaking public digital infrastructure before it's too far gone and broken, and I encourage you to enable Omaha to be proactive in building public digital infrastructure and not failing our citizens, our most underserved citizens, and these reports in the future.
Thank you. Lionel? I'm told you thought you had a few seconds short, so why don't you take another 45 seconds?
Thank you. I'll be quick. But like I was saying before, I appreciate this opportunity. Like I was saying before, I appreciate this opportunity. So we as citizens, you as councils, our leaders, our mayors, our representatives, in order for us to really make an effective change, we really have to listen to the people three or five minutes on oppression that's been bleeding in our generations from generation to generations, decades after decades. A few minutes is not going to be enough. We would like to see you all in the community listening to the people, unbiased, untimed, because these are issues that we've been dealing with. And you can't stop the issue by just putting a few seconds on the clock and saying that your time is up. The time has been going on for years and if it's been addressed correctly, we wouldn't have to be having this as an issue. So for the gentleman that was up here shedding his tears up here, I appreciate you guys giving him more time. But there are so many more even before him, before his age, before my age, that have had these same issues. So I'm asking that the millennials, centennials, and you all, really, we come together to make this happen. Or like she said, we're going to have to end up voting you guys out. And the millennials and the centennials and the Generation X is going to have to work together to end this issue. Because obviously, you've heard this before, but what is it? What is it? What is the resolution? I owe my time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an opponent signed in, Larry Stor. Yes.
Any other proponents that didn't sign in that want to speak?
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this resolution. This is another resolution that we really don't need. Resolutions have a way of becoming law. We already have laws. We already have federal laws. We already have state laws. We have a state constitution that says you will not make a special law. But if it's not going to be a law, then we don't need it. Okay, quick history lesson. We're all related because we're all descended from one maker and we all belong to what the scientists say, the animal kingdom. And the animal kingdom sometimes doesn't act very good. Sometimes they're bad actors. Sometimes they're evil. Well, and in the world, sometimes there are evil people. And evil people that incite you against your government for their political gain, for their power, are evil. Marxism is one of those. Black Lives Matter leaders admit that they are Marxist and that they do seek the overthrow of this government. Now, our leaders here in our public schools have an obligation to teach the truth. Ask yourselves how many people Marxists and authoritarians and people of power have killed? A lot. Go back to where, how we were founded, before the first flood. There must have been people slaves of some sort or other. Not everybody can be the council president. Somebody has to be the underlings. Somebody has to be the lawyers. We can't all be the ruler. Human nature creates problems and human nature is pitting us against each other. Now, one of the things with Marxism is that that's what they do. They pit us against each other. They turn your ideas inside out to make them mine and my ideas to make them his. Call me the hater when he's the hater or him the hater when I'm the hater. And I'm going to end with something that might be very controversial and Mr. Ben Gray might storm out like he has before. But in September of 2018, when I went to a public meeting on the ninth floor and I brought up a question, a logical question that anybody involved in civics has a right to do, is there a connection between the Juvenile Justice Center and the Omaha Land Bank, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I heard that on the radio on the way down that morning. So it was already out there in the public. But what did Mr. Gray do? Rather than try to reconcile with me, he stormed out of the meeting. He pulled one of the photographers, I don't know, Channel 6 probably, I've got it in my record somewhere, and had a private little t ê te à tê with him out in the hallway. It wasn't sanctioned by you people.
Your time expired.
That was him. And he called me, because I brought that up as a citizen, called me the racist.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, tit for tat, okay?
Your time's expired, Mr. Stor. Did anyone else miss the sign-in sheet on item number eight? Your name and address and whether you are proponent or opponent.
My name is Heather Fobbie and I live at 9935 S Plaza. Jamal is my son. And as he has stated before, we've been protesting since May 29th. The things that I would like to see addressed is their surrounding schools in this Omaha, surrounding area of Omaha that do not have one African-American teacher. What do these African-American students have to turn to for someone, to speak to somebody about issues that they're going through? It's not okay for them to go and have to speak to some white person that hasn't been through some of the issues they've been working through now. My son has a target on his back because he is African-American and has ADHD. He struggles very severely in school. His hopes is to play college football. He's a star football player. He's not going to make it in the NFL because he doesn't have it academically and he knows that. But why does it have to be that somebody has to be academically smart to go to the NFL? They shouldn't have to be academically smart. If they can play with their heart and passion, they can prove it out there on that field like he does every year in football. But there's not opportunities for them to even have the opportunity to go and show what they really have. They need more opportunities like that. They need people that go inside these schools and visit with the African-American students and listen to them on what their issues are having. Sometimes they can't turn to their parents, but they need to have somebody to turn to and speak to inside that school, in each and every one of these schools, for these kids to turn and be able to let their voice be heard. It may not be something that can happen yesterday, but my son's school has one African-American teacher in it and he doesn't even get to see that person because he teaches something that my son doesn't take. So there's no options for any of these students to go and relieve their stresses of what they're going through on a daily basis. So that's one thing that I would like to see changed.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank all those that came down on this agenda item today and shared with us their thoughts and their ideas. I want you to know you're always welcome here and, as I've said from this seat several times, Black Lives Matter. What I see here today is a lot of anger and frustration and justifiably so, but I also see a lot of courage. I see a lot of future leaders that are here today, some of them engaging for the first time. And I want you to know that I look forward to working with all of you on these critical issues and think they are critical to the future of Omaha and encourage you to stay engaged on our weekly meetings and in community affairs in general and City Council meetings in particular, including the very next item, as we work on our agenda and action items that take place in the city of Omaha. By way of procedure, this is a resolution and I would go ahead to motion to approve this resolution.
No further lights, roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Clermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, six to zero. Item nine, a resolution to urge the Nebraska State Legislature to place a ballot question before Nebraska voters at a primary or general election to repeal the ban on affirmative action in employment and contracting in Nebraska's political subdivisions.
Public hearing on item nine begins at this time. We do have a sign-in sheet to speak either as a proponent or opponent. So if you have not signed in and wish to speak, please do so outside the door and we will call on you. The first proponent is Thomas Warren.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Thomas Warren. I currently serve as President Chief Executive Officer at the Urban League of Nebraska, 3040 Lake Street. Previously, I had the privilege of serving with Omaha Police Department for 24 years as a police officer, the last four years as Chief of Police, and I'm here to support the resolution to repeal the ban on affirmative action. Because there is a very strong possibility that I would not have even been hired as a police officer if not for an affirmative action. The question that I have is that if discrimination of minorities exists, what is the best way to address inequities? When Ward Conley came to Nebraska promoting a referendum, he had a solution looking for a problem. Because in my lifetime, I could never recall minorities being overrepresented in any sector, whether it be public or private. But what the referendum did do was send a horrible message that Nebraska is not a friendly state for minorities. It also had a negative effect on a number of public contracts awarded to minority contractors, particularly here in the city of Omaha. And more importantly, it sent a very negative message to young professionals, some of whom you heard from today. A few years ago, the Urban League of Nebraska, along with Omaha Chamber of Commerce, administered a survey of young professionals. And the survey revealed that African-American young professionals were five to six times less likely to recommend the city of Omaha as a favorable place to live, work, or play. A follow-up survey indicated that overall, 80% of young professionals felt that it was important to have a diverse and inclusive work environment. In order for that to occur, our institutions, both public and private, need to take bold steps to appeal to the next generation of future leaders. And the city of Omaha can lead this effort by addressing the institutional and systemic racism by voting to repeal the ban on affirmative action. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Harris.
Good afternoon, Jasmine Harris, 5014 Pratt Street. I was at the county commissioners' meeting this morning and I'll say some of the comments that I said then and a few that I've added recently. All systems have disproportionately affected black and brown bodies specifically. And in order to begin moving the resolution that was passed by the Board of Health that declares racism as a public health crisis, this is another step in the right direction. So I'm asking that you all support this. Affirmative action was yanked out from under Nebraskans using deceptive language in the petition process and using someone from out of state to infiltrate communities of color to get them to sign it. The advocate and activist community was slightly different then than it is now and battling schemes like this was a huge undertaking. There is more unity than ever before between people who are diverse in age, race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, and more. Earlier, there was a testifier that spoke that only people who continue to talk about this issue are the same people. I ensure you that there are way more people, as of this afternoon, there's way more people here than there was earlier, that are ready to organize and mobilize to ensure that these inequities are eradicated, removing legislative and organizational policy barriers, begin to clear the path so that this work can be elevated to the next level to create real and sustainable change. Chief Schmoder and Mayor Stafford have announced efforts to address implicit bias with police and city staff and to work to increase diversity and inclusion in the city government. How would they do this if efforts that are set to increase representation of people of color through recruitment efforts are technically considered illegal? Creating community advisory and employee advisory committees along with hiring a diversity and inclusion manager with no authority to use the tools that work because they haven't been given that power due to legislation and policy. These are gestures and we want more. We don't want something that makes you feel good, but something with substance. There are many analogies that talk about, to illustrate the issue at hand with systemic, systematic, and institutional racism. And the most recent I've seen talks about groundwater. If you have one fish dead in a lake, then that's a problem with the fish. If half the fish in the lake die, then you have a problem with the lake. You can address the lake repair, but then if you have more fish that die, then there's something else wrong. The groundwater has been contaminated and toxicity has seeped into that and that's what racism is, not just in our city, in our state, in our country. And that is what needs to be treated. And affirmative action, repealing that ban on affirmative action is just one step in that direction. No, it won't answer the whole issue with racism and we know that and we just hope that you all understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kamara Snipe.
I reside at 5415 South 30th Street. Thank you, President Jerome, and members of the Omaha City Council. Again, Kamara Snipe, I am the proud president of the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance and also serve on the Omaha Public School Board, representing Sub District Eight, home of the Omaha Brown Bears. We just had a discussion about a need for a discussion on racism. And to me, this resolution is a part of that discussion. I stand before you today in support of the resolution that the city of Omaha will use to urge the Nebraska State Legislature to place a ballot question before the voters, us, to repeal the ban on affirmative action in employment. Please bear with me. It's been a long day. I rushed over here for my funeral. Some of you may have known Ms. Eleanor Lucky, but her home-going service was today. And it really resonates with me because I think about numerous conversations I've had with this woman. You couldn't go over there and she wasn't watching CNN, just period. And it's amazing to me how many things have not changed. And I apologize for my emotion today, but it's been an emotional day. It's been an emotional year. As a nation, we've come a long way when it comes to being inclusive. I mean, we've even had a black president. But our work is far from done. It's important that as a country, we continue to expand opportunities, excuse me, expand opportunities for all to ensure that we are giving everyone a fair shot. And I say, why not let Omaha, a city I love, but yet most of my family, leave? Why not let Omaha set a positive example? Having a background in workforce and an interest in education, I'll speak to that. The city of Omaha isn't what it was when I was a child. Our communities of color are a large part of the future of Omaha and we have to be prepared for our workforce, especially taking into consideration recovery from COVID-19. It's in our best interest, it's in your best interest as a city, to make this investment into our workforce and our economy. People of color make up nearly 40% of the workforce nationally. By 2050, one in two workers will be a person of color across the nation. As a nation becomes more diverse, so does our city, and as a city becomes more diverse, so does our workforce. Diversity in our workforce fosters innovation and competitiveness in business. Studies consistently show that diversity drives innovation and fosters creativity, which brings the business here. And yes, it's true that as communities of color, we've made strides. Disparities are still extremely prevalent. And if you have not seen that, then take off your filters. The implication of race-neutral policies are detrimental to all of our future generations. Policies that do not consider race will decrease representation of people of color. It is necessary, I stress, it is necessary that we create a fair process for expanding opportunities for everyone. Thank you.
Clarice Stombek, you're next.
Jamar Dorsey, 2615 North 32nd Street. I stand before you again today. These two issues are intertwined, right? You talk about equality and you talk about affirmative action. I'm a proponent of both. But I'll tell you why I'm a proponent of affirmative action. In the current work that we do now, or that I do now, it's about providing opportunity for people who normally wouldn't have those opportunities. And oftentimes, you don't know the opportunities And oftentimes, you don't know the opportunities that are in front of you if you're not exposed to them. And so when I think about employment opportunities and I think about contracting opportunities, oftentimes, I would like to believe that people just don't know the options that are available to them, and it is incumbent upon us to force that hand. Not to make a selection, but just to broaden the pool, the opportunity, and the network of whatever the employment agency is looking for or whatever the contracting agency is looking for. And so I'm in favor of affirmative action, that it should be placed back on the ballot for the citizens of Nebraska to vote for. But it's just not for me, it's for that next generation. That they have opportunities to be employed and run businesses, that they have opportunities for big and small contracts to build infrastructure in our city. If they don't know we exist, if you don't know something exists, then it's your responsibility, and it should be, to find out what is available to you. And so from our lens, we can continue to educate folks. We can continue to push practices in employment and contracting. But we need to make sure that this isn't something that gets swept under the rug again and is not right out in front of us. It can't be a secret that there are qualified people of color who can take these jobs. It can't be a secret that there are minority business owners who can handle and can do the contracting work in our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Clarice Dombeck. Sheena Glover, you're up next.
Can y'all hear me with the mask on? Okay, Clarice Dombeck, 1618 Image Street. The conceptualization of affirmative action by the Nebraska Civil Rights Initiative 424 was wrong. Affirmative action is not preferential treatment on the basis of race, gender, color, ethnicity, or nationality. Affirmative action is restitution. Restitution for four hundred years of wrongs. Restitution for York, the slave of Lewis and Clark. Restitution for the Omaha tribe and their four million acres of land that was stolen for them for less than twenty-two cents per acre. Restitution for all the enslaved people who toiled in Nebraska despite it being a free state. For the lynching of Joe Coe in 1891. For the police murder of J.A. Smith in 1899. Restitution for the brutal lynching of Will Brown in 1919. For the race riots, for redlining, for every "we don't serve any colored race here" signs posted in the city of Omaha. For the Omaha and Council Bluffs Street Railway Company's policy of not hiring Black drivers. Restitution for Vivian Strong, for David Rice and Ed Point Dexter, free him. Restitution for the police killing of Marvin Ammons. Restitution for my mother, who was fired from Bickers Hydraulics Plant for being an outspoken Black woman. Restitution for all the other acts of discrimination, racism, racist violence, and systemic oppression against Black, Indigenous, and people of color in Nebraska. Nebraska Civil Rights Initiative 424 conceptualization of affirmative action was wrong. It is not preferential treatment based on race, gender, color, ethnicity, or nationality. Affirmative action is restitution to begin to right all of these wrongs. And since I have more time, I would like to say that my professor, one of my professors, Preston Love Jr., is here. And he is one of the people in my life that gave me the words to come and speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheena Glover. Shaylese Oliver, you're next.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna kinda, can you hear me through my mask? Okay. So my name is Sheena Glover. I can't do this. My name is Sheena Glover. I live at 5426 Reynolds Street. I am also a firefighter paramedic with the Omaha Fire Department. I thought that it was very important that I come and speak in support of the affirmative action ban being removed because I am the fourth Black female in the history of our fire department. The fire department, as we know, was established in 1860, and I am one of two Black females currently standing. I was told by a fire captain once, early in my career, that because I was Black, I would have to work ten times harder than everybody else, and I still wouldn't be on the same playing field. Which spoke volumes to me because I've always been an honor student. I've always been someone who strives for excellence in everything that I do. I currently work as a community safety specialist for our fire department. And I try to go above and beyond to do everything that I can to keep our community safe. I believe that having more minorities within departments, it actually helps the city. It is a plus for the things that we do. I can speak firsthand from being on the front lines and coming in as a person of color and actually that being the de-escalation point. I have been told, from the promotional standpoint of the process, that the fire department hasn't had a female captain since 2008. I am on the captain's list, and I asked about that. And I was told that to promote a female out of order would be affirmative action, and we no longer have that. Even though my resume is three pages long, even though I have more certifications than many people on this job and in this department. I have a bachelor's in EMS. I have an associate's in fire science. And I'm close to finishing a second bachelor's in fire administration and arson investigation. I believe that sometimes we're quick to say no because it doesn't affect us directly, but understand the power in having people that don't look like us every day on the front lines and in different facets of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Shaylese Oliver. Luis Jimenez is next.
Hi, Shaylese Oliver, 5132 North 116th Street. So I came here as part of What Youth Could Do. So we are speaking with OPS School Board, and a couple of things that we'd like to see changed is an increase in counselors of color. So OPS is one of the most diverse schools within the state of Nebraska. Yet, the people who are teaching us, the people who are counseling us, do not look like us. They do not represent the mass minority that are inside those schools. As was stated earlier during the first resolution, how do you expect us to get help, who are going through all these traumas, who are losing community members, who are constantly dealing with negative effects from the police and from authority figures, to get help, to wanna do better, to wanna be a part of everything else Omaha's going on if we don't have any help, if we don't feel comfortable talking to someone because they may not have gone through the experiences we have? And so in order for OPS to be able to do that and hire more counselors of color, we first need this affirmative act passed. So I am, I am a proponent of it. And I just really hope that if you guys do pass this, you guys are in full support and that you guys will also get out and vote so we can actually see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis. Sarah Smolam, you're next.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Birch Street. I'm gonna try not to repeat what has been said. One thing, though, I told the commissioners today was that I didn't realize in 2008, the concept of affirmative action was banned in 2008. A lot of things happened in 2008. I missed that. But anyway, to oppose affirmative action seems to me that you would not want to give somebody an opportunity, a fair opportunity. And that has, giving opportunity the right thing, right course, doing the right thing, that's something that was tried to do in the inception of this country. Affirmative action, the first step to affirmative action took place in the Committee of Five, who wrote the Declaration of Independence. And in that first draft by the committee, they took out, or excuse me, they required the colonies to end slavery. And that's what the Committee of Five did in the Declaration of Independence. When it went to the full body, that verbiage was taken out. And so a few years later, we all know it happened, that the Declaration got passed. A few years later, this is how Thomas Jefferson described it. "The clause to reprobating the enslaving the inhabitants of Africa was struck out in complacence to South Carolina and Georgia, who had never attempted to restrain the importation of slaves and who, on the contrary, still wished to continue it." "Our northern brethren also, I believe, felt a little tender under these censures for, though their people had very few slaves themselves, yet they had been pretty considerably carriers of them to others." Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Smolam. Chris Rogers, Commissioner, you're next.
A little short. My name is Sarah Smolam. I live at 3015 Spring Street. And I am here to organize my notes. And I'm here because I'm for Resolution 0678, for affirmative action. Before COVID-19 broke out, I worked at Starbucks inside of the Mutual of Omaha building, which was, most of the customers that we served worked in one of those buildings. And I saw a decent amount of diversity among the workforce there. But mostly what I saw was there were people who were work buddies. You know, everybody has friends that they've made because they're coworkers. And I saw lots of pairs across racial boundaries. I think specifically of a young Indian woman named Rohia and an older white man named Joe, who came down every day together to get coffee. And they were friends. And there were many other people like Rohia and Joe who were friends. And I remember watching them and thinking, this is what affirmative action is for. This is for people to interact with people that perhaps they would not have. If you've had a homogeneous upbringing, like me, or many people here in Nebraska, you wouldn't interact with people who didn't look like you. But I didn't even realize at that point, and I didn't know until a few days ago, that affirmative action has been banned in Nebraska, which is frankly embarrassing. And so, you know, Mutual of Omaha took that opportunity to add diversity to their workforce, and I think that's important. But I think we need it because it does foster friendships and empathy and compassion for people. So when things like the murder of George Floyd takes place, it's no longer that's their problem or that happened to that community. It happened to us, it happened to our friends, it happened to people that we care about. And we need that kind of compassion and empathy in our workforces and across our legislative bodies in order that we understand one another and build a stronger sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers. Jackie Kappas, you're next.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm giving out to you a diagram that I gave out today at the county board meeting just to try to make this point a little simpler, it's pretty direct. And I like to start by saying, you know, immediately after the George Floyd incident, I can't recall a time where I was overwhelmed by messages coming from groups that had rarely talked in this space. Four to five messages from groups coming in emails from organizations that had never really been on the record like that before, you know, putting words into groups' lexicons like white privilege, white supremacy, structural inequity, structural racism. One of the first things that I saw when this was really coming was this graph that I gave you, and I thought it put that in perspective pretty well. One of my colleagues, over the weekend, shared with me an email that was sent to him from one of his constituents. And at the heart of the email, the email asked him to vote against this because it would be discrimination against white people. So I had to step back and I just told him, you know, this is where we're trying to get to when these conversations were happening. When all of this was going, people said people would be uncomfortable in these conversations and it would be some education that would have to happen. So simply put, you see in that first graph...
Can you, Chris, just kind of shrink down on top of the...
Okay, sorry. I thought it was there. I don't know where to lay it out. Okay. From this point that I'm making to you, the point I'd like to make...
There you go.
Okay, is, when all the protests were at the heart of it, this is what they were talking about, the system they're set up with inequity. And when affirmative action was, when the constitutional amendment was passed to get rid of affirmative action, this is basically what they were saying. You wanna take this year, these years of inequality, and then all of a sudden, make it equal. But because of the structure that's already been set up, there's no way to get there. What I think we're advocating for now, and everybody's saying that you wanna change the structural piece to make room to get at this, is equity. The term that affirmative action basically evolved of. I mean, people were saying affirmative action, they went to diversity, inclusion. Now the term is equity. And I think what we need and what everybody's been trying to do is get here. To me, affirmative action is these pieces and this latter. It's intentional. It's not discrimination. It's basically leveling. And we've been talking about race for the last six to eight weeks. So why is it bad that we not talk about it when we talk about policy? Because the point I'm trying to move is that we're gonna have to be intentional. And we all in the aftermath of this committed to being intentional to do this, and you're gonna have to have a policy that does it. And for us, as the government entities, to be able to do that, you can't use the full authority and be creative with what we can do without having this off the books. So with that, I'd like to ask you for your approval of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Jackie Kappas. Candace Price, you're next. Followed by Nathan Scott.
My name is Jackie Kappas, 5007 Western Ave. I speak here today as a concerned human educator and mental health provider. I very recently moved back to Omaha and felt some confusion this morning when I woke up and read about a motion to repeal affirmative action. And then I read it again, and it was a motion to repeal a ban on affirmative action. A ban on affirmative action. While my story about affirmative action is nowhere near the most important or dire story here, I think it is important that we hear many voices speak because it is so important. So, from a personal perspective, I can speak to the first time I saw a female leader at work speak truth to power and felt my throat open up and my voice get louder. I can speak to the student who I supported, who came to me crying that the school had finally hired the first teacher of color, a teacher that looked like him, and that that teacher was teaching real history. Furthermore, as someone who supports students in dreaming as a teacher and as a therapist, I can tell you that it is much easier to dream of something if you have seen it. We all deserve to see ourselves represented. And those that represent should represent Omaha, which means more leadership that is Black, Indigenous, people of color, that are LGBTQ, that are women, that are transgender expansive, that are differently abled. Which means we need affirmative action in the hiring and contracting of Nebraska. And which means more public platforms to talk about race and issues of racial justice also need to exist. I encourage you to vote in support of Resolution Eight and Nine and that we work to make the language in anything on the ballot very clear. Because as I read it this morning, it was not clear. And I think it needs to be really clear on the ballot what people are voting for, so that everyone who votes is actually voting for what they want. May those that represent us, represent us.
Thank you. Candace Price. Nathan Scott, you're next. And Brenda Council, you're up.
Good afternoon. My name is Candace Price, 5132 North 116th Street.
I'm here for a proponent of this bill to ban affirmative action, the repeal affirmative action. I think that it is amazing that we would have to take a stance on such a thing in 2020. I understand fully that we have to. And if I didn't know that before today, I attended this morning's session of the County Board of Commissioners, where there were two commissioners that voted against it. Their stance for voting against it was the fact that they felt that they needed to have more conversation on the matter, actually asking someone who was here, Ms. Brenda Council, would she take the time to talk with them about it? Here's what I'm going to tell you to that. If in 2020, and you're over the age of 40, you need to have conversations to understand the disproportionate inequality that has happened against African Americans and people of color, then that is your own woeful and willful ignorance. That is you using your own white privilege to not help, but to hurt. If you are over the age of 15 in this country and a person of color, you understand this issue. That means as a child, you understand this issue. I'll give you a quick for instance. My daughter spoke earlier, Shalise. She went to Saddle Brook Elementary School. In third grade, she was the only Black person in her class. There was another class next door that actually had five Black children mixed in the class. Had there been any Black staff or any Black administrator, someone probably would have noticed that, to at least mix it up a little bit, so no child felt uncomfortable. I also, as a parent, could have actually asked for her to be removed from that class and put into the other. But why would I make it where there's one class with only white children, no person of color? And then why would I teach my daughter something that was not a lesson that she did not need to learn? She was going to continue to experience that. And she has, and she's continued to experience that because she has been in all honors and AP courses at her school, where she is one of very few Black faces that she found in those classes. That is part of the issue. The issue is that she did not have her first Black teacher until seventh grade. She did not have her first Black administrator until high school. She just now has her first Black teacher for a core course, a core curriculum course. It's engineering, and that's because she's now attending North Carolina A&amp;T State University, historically Black college and university. For her to have someone to look up to that looks like her, that is what we have had to do. Shalise Oliver has turned down a full ride scholarship to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln for their College of Engineering, so that she can be surrounded by high-achieving, high-learning individuals that also look like her and understand her plight and understand what she's been dealing with. Another thing that I'd like to mention here, when it deals with affirmative action and what persons of color have to consider that you guys may not, we even have to consider things as small as how we name our children. What will we name our children? Because 18 years from now, they'll need to be applying to jobs. What if we accidentally give them a name that's meaningful to us, but it alerts people ahead of time that, oh my goodness, they're Black? What will we do when they get shut down from jobs because of this? These are some of the issues. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Scott. Brenda Council, you're next, followed by Vicki Young.
Nathan Scott, 9280 Z Street. The last people struck a chord with me because I named my son DeMarcus in 94. Shortly after reading, shortly after he was born, I read in the paper that studies were sent out that people with names like DeMarcus were not getting jobs at the same rate that people named John and Josh are more white-sounding names, applications sent out with the same qualifications. And I've seen this play out in my son's life when he went to apply for his first job. I didn't plan on saying that, but she really struck a chord with me on that. It's no debate that there's inequality when it comes between White and, or Caucasian and Black people, inequality in wealth, economic inequality, educational opportunities, inequality in the criminal justice system, so on and so on. So I would ask you, do you believe that this is because Black people are inferior? Do we believe that? I don't believe that. I hope no one up here believes that. A quick story, I got my CDL. And going into my first job interview, a Black man was coming out. I went to CDL school with him. I knew he was more qualified than I was. I knew he had experience in the field that we were going for that I did not have. I got the job. I chalked it up to, I struck a good rapport with the interviewer. A few months into the job, I asked a coworker, I told him the story about this Black man. He said, "Do you really think we would hire a..." Fill in the blank, you know what I'm saying. And at that point, even though I had been, thought I was anti-racist, it occurred to me, looking around this company, there were no Black people there. That did not even occur to me until this racist remark was given. Civil rights movement was 50 years ago, over 50 years ago. Do we want to be having this fight 50 years from now? Affirmative action is a small, tangible first step that we can make, that you can make today. It's a small thing. But it's time.
Thank you. Brenda Council. Vicki Young, you're next, followed by Keegan Corf.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Omaha City Council. My name is Brenda Council. I reside at 1615 Work Street. And I'm here today in support of this resolution, urging the city council to urge the Nebraska Legislature to advance a ballot initiative to repeal the ban on affirmative action. Recent events in our nation, in our city, in our state, have illuminated this country's shameful history of racial injustice and racism, systemic racism. And when we look at systemic racism, we who study it know that it is a reflection of public policies and institutional practices that work in various and often reinforcing ways to perpetuate racial group inequity. I stand before you as a product of affirmative action. You heard my brother speak to the fact that he probably wouldn't have been hired on the OPD but for affirmative action. I would not have attended law school but for an affirmative action scholarship program that overcame the deprivation of an opportunity for my father. My father, a Black man, who came to Omaha, Nebraska in around 1923, a few years after our government, in fact, but white supremacists in Tulsa, Oklahoma bombed the Black Wall Street. My father came here from Mogi, Oklahoma, small town just south of Tulsa. He came here looking for opportunity, a Black man in 1923, with one year of college, who only job he could get was working in the packing houses, where he worked for 42 years to provide for our family. But he couldn't provide what he needed to provide to our family to enable me to go to law school without an affirmative action program, because he had been deprived of that because of the color of his skin. I was reminded, and I reminded my brother this afternoon, after 42 years, my father received a monthly pension of $36.26, something that he would not have received, he'd have received much more had he been accorded the kind of job commensurate with his education. But he was deprived of that. And that's why we're here today. Because we must make one thing clear. As Professor and author Ibram X. Kendi has written, racial inequity is a problem of bad policy, not bad people. And I have to empathize that because I think the county commissioners who voted against the resolution this morning think that if you are not supportive of affirmative action, that you're somehow a bad person. Now, what we're saying to you is, it's the policy that is bad, and that you have to change the policy. And if you look at the constitutional amendment prohibiting affirmative action, it actually is a glaring example of a public policy that entrenches inequity in our state. It entrenches the inequitable distribution of opportunities, rights, and privileges. Now, if, as the mayor has pronounced, this city is serious about developing a strategic resolution to improve diversity, inclusion, and equity, we must do away with structures that serve to uphold and perpetuate a system of disproportionate opportunity based solely on the color of one's skin. A step in that direction is to adopt this resolution, urging the Nebraska Legislature to support a ballot initiative to repeal the constitutional ban on affirmative action. Doing that removes a policy structure that prevents us to achieving what this diagram shows as equity. Understand what affirmative action is. Read this, equity. Custom tools that identify and address inequality. That's what affirmative action is, a custom tool. Thank you.
Vicki Young, followed by Keegan Corf, and then Matthew Lamar.
Good afternoon. I am Vicki Young, President of the Omaha Branch of the NAACP, 2221 North 24th Street, 68110. Thank you for this opportunity. The Omaha Branch of the NAACP, our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. In 2008, the Nebraska State Legislature adopted a ban on affirmative action related to employment and contracting in Nebraska political bodies. The ban has perpetuated disparities, racial injustice, and systemic racism in our state, and represents a barrier to improving diversity, inclusion, and equity at local government and community levels. As part of the commitment to racial justice and active engagement in anti-racism, rejecting the hierarchy of racist policy, the Omaha Branch of the NAACP and the Omaha Community Council for Racial Justice and Reconciliation, we support efforts to repeal the ban on affirmative action, which would be a step towards progress, step towards progress in doing away with structures upholding and perpetuating systemic racism. Yes, we support today's resolution. And during this critical moment in the movement, the Omaha Branch of the NAACP and OCCRJR will not only work with co-collaborators to engage and lobby state legislature until the repeal is made, but we will also educate the community on the significance of today's resolution and the repeal of the ban on affirmative action, excuse me. And so, on behalf of the Omaha NAACP, I ask that you vote in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Keegan Corf. Matthew Lamar is next, then Edward, or Eduardo Quintero.
Good afternoon, President Jerem, members of the council. My name's Keegan Corf. I reside at 1936 South 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. I'm here today as a constituent of President Jerem and as a public school advocate to speak as a proponent for Resolution Number Nine, supporting efforts of the Omaha City Council to urge the Nebraska State Legislature to place a ballot question before Nebraska voters to repeal the ban on affirmative action. Over the course of the last two months, I have personally participated in and witnessed organized action by young Black community leaders speaking up against injustice in our communities and in our schools. I've witnessed the 36-day-long protest outside of Douglas County Attorney Don Klein's gated community. I've seen teachers stand up for Black lives. And I've seen the students of Omaha Public Schools organize an impactful rally and engage in public comment at their local school board meeting. At that school board meeting, which was just last night, I witnessed white supremacy firsthand and saw youth peacefully push back against a system that has treated them unfairly and provided fewer opportunities for them for far too long. I envision a city that is safe and representative for all our youth in the future. I want Black, Brown, and those who identify as BIPOC teachers and doctors and lawyers and city government officials, and I want them intentionally placed in those roles because their voice is critical and wanted in our community. I want them to see themselves reflected in the leaders that serve their communities. It is clear that our city is hungry for anti-racist policy change. The repeal of the ban on affirmative action is an important step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew. Eduardo Quintero is next, followed by Michelle O'Sutton.
My name is Matthew Lamar. I reside at 4827 Pierce Street in Omaha. I'm speaking today as a recent high school graduate, class of 2020. And over my 13 years of education, I spent seven years in Omaha Public Schools and six years in the Omaha Catholic School System. And in those 13 years, I never once had a teacher of color at all, from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And while I feel that I was academically prepared for life after high school, I feel like I was robbed of the experience of having someone, an educator, to look up to who does not look like me, who is not of the same culture as me. I think if there's one thing that this summer has taught us, it's that the experiences of white Americans and people of color in America, especially Black Americans, are not the same. And I think perhaps one of the reasons that the events of this summer and the issues which have arisen have been so shocking to me and many of my peers is that we have not been exposed to these issues because our educators are all white, all look like us. I feel like without that diversity in our school system, within our educators, we are forced to sort of remain in our fishbowls. I'm not exposed to other issues which I can never expect to understand as a white male in America, issues which I will never have to deal with. And especially after the resurgence of the Black Lives Matter movement this summer, as we have all committed to really addressing these issues, especially within our schools, the only way we can effectively address these issues is if we have people of color in positions to teach these issues. That's one thing that I've really had to work on this summer as these issues have arisen, is just stepping back and listening, listening to the people who these issues affect directly. And when we have a school where there are no Black teachers, you know, how can we expect, you know, people with white privilege, us, to listen to these people who, whose experiences are at the core of this movement if they are not in the positions in which to do that? So for that reason, I'm in support of this measure and would urge you to also support this measure.
Thank you. Eduardo. Michelle O'Sutton is next, followed by Preston Love. And if you wish to speak on this item and have not signed in, please do so outside the doors.
My name's Eduardo Quintero. I live at 96 and Q. I wanted to speak on the item earlier, but I'll just intersect it as well. It doesn't make sense that we're here in 2020. I'm part of the working class, I'm sure as many of these people are too. And we have to use a lot of our time and energy for other things. We shouldn't be here speaking to you all. This shouldn't be anything that we should be discussing. But nonetheless, dialogue is important, right? So it's important for our voices to be heard. I think the thought behind opposing affirmative action is that people should be hired and included in organizations based on their merit. And if that were true, we wouldn't see only the second or perhaps fourth historical woman of color firefighter here in Omaha. That should speak volumes already. That's a perfect example, a direct example here in our community. Let alone things like people with the same exact resumes submitting it under the name DeMarcus, not getting interviews, yet people with Judeo-Christian names getting calls back for the same exact resumes. It's deeply problematic, and the least you can do is ensure this small little tidbit of inclusivity. With that being said, I don't think that hiring more Black police officers or women of color into policing is the solution. I don't believe that placing more money and resources into the police directly is beneficial. The amount of money that is poured into policing over the years, you would think that us as a leader of the world, the United States, would not have over, on average, over 1,000 deaths. And the next industrial nation doesn't even have triple digits. So I think the solution there is to essentially def... So I think the solution there is to essentially defund and then abolish. If you look at the case with Rashard Brooks, please raise your hand if you're familiar with that case. Are you, one hand? Two? So in that case, the officer that did murder Rashard Brooks, he had over 2,000 hours of training. I don't know if you've ever put in 2,000 hours into a specific skill or activity, but that would be four hours every day for a year that you would practice that skill or hobby or activity or even your profession. So that's over 2,000 hours he had, and in April, just two months prior, he had received extensive training in how to de-escalate. That's just one example of hundreds that you could research. I also ask you if you have done any research on to how to defund and abolish the police. If you've read any sort of academic journals, articles, books, I'm asking you, by hands or head nods if it's too difficult to raise your hand.
The rules of the debate do not allow questioning of the council.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize it was a debate, my apology. Yeah, so anyway, if you haven't, I definitely implore you to look into that. Yeah, that's just not the avenue to take, and yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Michelle O'Sutton.
Did I say Butler? My handwriting might be terrible. Butler. Okay, I'm sorry.
They had been, go ahead, Michelle, come on up.
I'll stand with her.
Preston Hillway.
Come on, Preston.
He loved it.
Yay.
Oh, by the way, after Preston Love, we have Ben Swan and then Mohammed Jamali.
Michelle Butler, 6402 North 95th Court. I'm coming here personally, as an African-American woman, 40-plus-years-old. I had to go through my stages of loving myself as an African-American woman. With that being said, I don't necessarily believe anymore that this, like, I'm a proponent of this, for sure, but I also don't believe that I want to sit at the table if someone does not want me at the table. I believe, I start believing more of Wakanda. Everybody's seen Black Panther, Wakanda. I just feel like this battle has gone on far too long. My name is Michelle. I named my son Shaquille. He's probably not been able to get, he's just graduating, but he may not be able to get in the door for him to sit at the table, for you to understand that he's an awesome black young man that will be able to represent whatever job he's trying to apply for. Michelle Butler has gotten in the door. I went through stages with my hair and everything, colors, I love my colors, I love, like, in our culture, it's about expression. In any person who's excluded, it's about expression. The LGBTQ community, it's about expression. So when we go into these spaces, we can't not be ourselves. I used to go and flat iron my hair and dress a certain way to get the job. I don't always feel that that's necessary. I feel like we should be able to come as we are. So to me, I just feel like as a personal testimony, you know, I know there's many people who missed out, but I also go for places that I know I'm going to be comfortable. I work at a black organization. I'm totally comfortable there. I don't want to go. I graduated from Nebraska Wesleyan University. I spoke at the inauguration of our president about inequality, racism, all of this stuff. I spoke in those classes. I didn't want to read anything else about white privilege. I didn't want to read anything about that stuff. I'm like, why are we still talking about this? I want to learn more than, I don't want to go to college and learn about MLK. I don't want to go to college and hear about slavery. I'm like, we, this is just an agenda, I feel like it's just being pushed on us. I'm choosing to homeschool my daughter now because of affirmative action, if not being in the schools. I want my daughter to have an African-American teacher, a female teacher, you know? So I just feel like these are reasons that it needs to be really pushed, like they said, change the wording so people understand. Some people may not know what repeal means, so, you know, change it, you know, and make it possible for people, because this is the way the world needs to be, but also, you know, at some point, like now, it's getting to the point to where it's detrimental to society, the way things are going, so, thank you.
Thank you. Preston Love, followed by Ben Swan and Mohammed Jamali.
My name is Preston Love. My address is 6021 Villa de Sante. I hope that you noticed that I came before you without any notes. I don't need any notes to talk about affirmative action. I stand before you as a victim of the lack of affirmative action and a victor of affirmative action. I don't need notes. I need you to know that I'm tired of standing before boards and commissions and people talking about the same things over and over. We talked about and argued the same case in the 60s, the 60s. Affirmative action comes from 1961 as an executive order. Here we are in 2020, talking about affirmative action. And not only that, we're talking about it for the same reasons that it was executed in the 60s. Disparities in the 60s are still here in 2020. I'm tired of arguing these cases, but I know that if some of us who have lived through it and have the memory of redlining, I lived in a redlining community right here, in Omaha, and I was discriminated against and lived and went to segregated schools right here in Omaha. When I went to the University of Nebraska, there were seven African-Americans in the whole school with the exception of the athletes. When I went and worked for IBM in a division that had 200,000 employees, eight of us were hired into professional jobs. Oh my goodness, this is deja vu. And so I say, and I really came to speak as it relates to black contractors. Before the affirmative action was started at the federal level and then became part of the way in which we did business in America, black business and contractors in Omaha, Nebraska were failing and did not, to a large degree, exist. By, after the affirmative action in 61, we had, in 80s, I'll use 80, we had over 150 to 60 very successful black contractors because of affirmative action. We had some of them who were doing so well that they began to accumulate wealth and they brought wealth to our community. And then, after the ban that came from the public vote of Nebraskans, we now have a handful of very, the contractors are failing. We wouldn't have to do this if cities and counties and states would buy and use our contractors without any kind of affirmative action, but you're not. So we need affirmative action. So I stand before you as a witness of a long memory of over and over and over, and I respectfully say to you, enough is enough. Go ahead, and I urge you to pass this resolution and help us all as we try to get the state to do the right thing. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Ben Swan, followed by Mohammed Jamali.
Good afternoon, Honorable City Council. Came here on a different item today and just stumbled into this and found that I had to speak as a proponent of this as well. I'm a new father this year, and it's been a year for everyone. And I had to, I'm a small business owner, I have 10 commercial tenants that we've kind of built from nothing, and the majority of my tenants are small business owners that are actually women-owned, but there's no people of color who are, who I do business with right now. And I had no people of color who taught me. And I went to public school and I went to private school about 50/50, and, you know, I'm not quite 40, but if I'm honest with myself, a lot of it is just willful ignorance. I have been given a lot of chances, and I am very grateful for those chances, and I try to contribute to our community because of the chances that I've been given, because I've made mistakes. And I've listened to a lot of this conversation that's been going on, and I've been fortunate enough to have a lot of people of color who have shared their stories with me, and I've come up before you many times, and I'm intimidated when I come up before you, and I lose my words, and I just can't, with all my privilege, with everything that I've been given, I just, this is just one of 100 things that is just so important in our culture right now, because I look at my child, is do I want him to grow up in a world of animosity and hatred and division where the businesses that I have to board up because of these protests and these riots, and the callousness and the lack of compassion for the underlying causes is what I, that's what I attribute it to, just, I mean, cards face up, and so, there's, do I want to see that perpetuation of willful ignorance and the callousness and the pain and the deprivation that that's going to cause in a world that my, in Omaha that my son grows up in? I don't want that to be his Omaha. And so that's why I'd ask that you guys repeal the ban on affirmative action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mohammed? Cole Christensen, you're next, followed by Michaela Chambers.
Good afternoon. I'm just appreciative for the Omaha City Councilors, they're doing a great job. I'm supportive for this suggestion about equal and equality for employment that's facing a lot of people of our community.
Would you lift the microphone up close?
Yeah.
Just raise it up a little bit, like this. There you go.
So the issue about employment and equality, we're just supporting that idea, and we're just saying it is good for the community and people can get more benefit because we facing a lot of people who are, who are complaining about. Some people, they apply the job where I come from, I'm president of the East African Department Association of Nebraska. We mostly came to Nebraska as refugee, although our people now have become a citizen of Nebraska, especially Omaha County. So some people are very professional jobs, they have a degree, some they have a bachelor degree. Sometime when they apply the higher jobs, they disqualify somehow, we don't know that is discrimination or not, but we supporting for this idea, this thing today, a group in the city. We just say thank you for that, and we will continue to encourage people to apply the job. And also, we thank you so much for July 1st, we had a Sunday National Day, we just requested the Omaha City to change the light above Calbridge. They did group job, they changed our light, our community, they went from nine to 11 that night, they celebrated, they, everybody see that they are blocking the city because the light was blue and white, and everyone very appreciative of the city, and we say thank you so much for that, and I'm saying I'm glad to be here in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole Christensen, followed by Michaela Chambers. LaCedric Gibson is after that.
Cole, whoops, sorry. Cole Christensen, 5906 South 140th Ave., 68137. First off, I was going to apologize for the way I'm dressed, but I was coming from work, and then I realized that's kind of a point, is that these things being held in the middle of the day and not at lunch really limits the accessibility of everyday citizens who are affected by these issues to come here and speak on it. So in the future, this is not even the first one I've been to where this has been the scenario. I understand you guys have a lot going on, but it seems like accessibility needs to be addressed so that the voices that need to be here have the ability to do so. I also wanted to echo some of the things that other people have mentioned today about the importance of knowing people of color and black people and how it really affects. I've grown up out west. I had a neighbor growing up that if it would not have been for them, I would have had no exposure to anybody that was not white. Like the younger man mentioned just a minute ago that graduated recently, that he had not had a single person of color as a teacher any of his time, I can second that. But the reason that I got involved in this and started learning more about it and combating my ignorance as much as I possibly could is because of these friends I had and what that did for me, and I look at the people that I work with in a very predominantly, actually all-white position, and I see their ignorance, and I don't know how to address it. We need, we need a helping hand in that, and that's why I am here supporting, and the wording, I'm going to screw it up right now, just like I did when we were doing the repeal of the death penalty in like 2015, we were having the same issue, and I feel like the wording is often intentionally misleading so that people have trouble understanding what exactly it is they're voting on or just go, you know what, this is too confusing, I'll go to the next thing that I know, that I've seen the commercials for. These are issues that affect people every single day, and I feel like we need to make it easy for an average citizen who doesn't have a whole lot of free time to come do research and all of this stuff, still contribute. And the last thing, and I know I've jumped around a lot, but I apologize, is that I would like to second what Joy said earlier, that I was at the Klein protests and I witnessed some, what I knew was predictable, having grown up out there, but some nightmarishly disgusting behavior on the part of some of our Omaha citizens, and I also watched the Omaha Police Department literally help a man who had just run into a protester, going slow, mind you, but still ran into him, the guy fell against his hood, and the cops said, "Go home, sir." Like, we saw multiple different occasions where they took the side of the aggressor. They tried to get me to delete pictures off my phone of these five pickups with multiple Confederate flags and Blue Lives Matter trucks that came in, and it was me, my gay ass, and a bunch of young girls, and they were going to stop us, and specifically me, and the cops came and were mad that I took pictures of their license plates. Like, what? I don't know, that's completely unacceptable to me, and I know it's unrelated to the issue, but I just want you to know that there are people now who have been brought into the fold in this, and we're not going anywhere. Like, I'm not going anywhere, and I am persistent and annoying, so get used to seeing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. Michaela Chambers, followed by LaCedric Gibson, and then Willie Barney. Remind people, if you wish to speak, please sign in outside and they'll get us your information.
Michaela Chambers, again, 9611 North 29th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. I am in support to repeal the ban on affirmative action, Resolution 0678. The tech industry is the future of this country. How many tech startups are currently based in Omaha, Nebraska? Large corporations over the last several weeks have been taking a firm stand against racism and systemic issues within their own businesses. In order to bring economic growth, which is a large part of y'all's job, to Omaha, such as these tech corporations, which are historically based in much more liberal and progressive cities, we must start getting ahead of the curve on social issues instead of remaining years behind. The resolution is a very small step in the right direction, but I hope to see more profound and extensive legislative changes to the city of Omaha that will bring expansive wealth and economic growth to the city of Omaha due to what we could be as a, deemed as a forward-thinking city on issues such as racism. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. LaCedric Gibson. Willie Barney. I view as the last proponent, so is there anyone we missed as proponents? I'm calling for additional proponents. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is LaCedric Gibson. I live at 1314 North 70th Avenue. I'm a proponent for this bill because there's a bill going around Congress right now, it's HR40, it's for reparations for African-Americans, and I feel like it's not going to get passed anyways, so maybe this is my step to get towards that, because I feel like we need resources within the communities that are asking for it, like mainly black ones, and here is like some information I compiled to just see how resources are spread out throughout the city. So let's see, this says, reported by Channel 3 News, of Omaha's $1.1 billion budget for 2020, 15% goes to the police. We have a Uniform Patrol Bureau that has five precincts, a Criminal Investigation Bureau has three precincts, Professional Oversight Bureau has one inter- has three precincts, Professional Oversight Bureau has one internal affairs unit, Police Services Bureau has an administrative, support services and, um, those two administrative and support services section. And then Executive Services Bureau has training in, uh, I believe, commerce, maybe? Um, and then I also found that the budget hasn't appropriated forty-four thousand in benefits with a hundred and forty-two thousand in compensation. And then from the same website, I found that, um, just looking at libraries around town, the, the library department has two directors and five branches. That's it. Like just compare those two. And then the Florence Library, which is, um, obviously around more black people, that has a budget of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand compensation expenditures compared to one million, one-hundred-and-twelve thousand at the Millard Public Library. Um, and then the Washington, I think it's the Washington Library on Ames, if I'm going to name wrong, sorry, but that has five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, so that's a vast difference. And, um, just moving along, the Human Rights and Relations Department has nine board members, one director, one assistant director, and then a Commerce and Education outreach branch, uh, project center in compliance, sorry, my handwriting's kind of bad, and one branch, and then a Civil Rights and Support Services branch, that's it. And also found that there's a pie chart of just like how funds are split up in the city and for public works is thirty-nine percent and then like I said, police is like fourteen percent. And in the budget, we only have two million dollars for community service programs. We have twelve million dollars for county jail and emergencies. So that's like ten million dollars difference just right there. Um, and then from there, like just another thing in the budget, the hotel convention, the hotel construction was at seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, in two thousand and twenty, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in neighborhood grants. Mid-Tour in Nebraska is at ten thousand. Pace is at sixty thousand. Douglas County Jail has five million dollars, which is a two-thousand-dollar increase from last year. Um, the Deputy City Department has six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars in funding, which is five thousand more than was recommended in the first place. And we have four-hundred-and-three thousand dollars left in the grant for, um, cops stop school violence. I mean, why does a cop have to be in a school in the first place? Um, the Justice and Mental Health Collab funded, fund started with seventy-five thousand and that's now down to thirty-six thousand dollars in grant money. Um, I got one more here, pretty sure I'm on time, but this, yeah.
Go ahead, the microphone was cutting you off.
This says, how do we get a grant of one million dollars for explosive detection canines and a team there? And there's people who can't even get like a five-hundred-dollar loan from businesses. So like, the resources aren't spread out in an effective way, in my opinion, so maybe we can get people in these jobs through some sort of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to encourage anyone with, uh, comments on the public budget, we will have a public budget hearing at six-thirty PM on August eleventh, right here. The next speaker is Willie Barney.
Good afternoon. Willie Barney, one-twenty-three-thirty-three Cumming Street. I was here earlier for the county. I've just been, uh, listening, uh, to our community. I've been to the council over the last twelve, fourteen years, a number of times. Um, it's powerful to hear the community speaking for themselves. Uh, I thought twice about saying something, but I wanted to echo some of what I've heard. Um, this is a historic day, one way or the other, it's a historic day. Um, unfortunately, as my friend Press said, in some cases, we're reliving history, having to fight a battle that we've already won, having to bring it back to the council, to the county and to the state to refight the same battle. Um, you look at the data, you can go through the data, uh, we know employment, education, housing, incarceration, every stat that you can look at, traditionally African-Americans and also people of color, Hispanic, Native American. We can look at the data that you have, that we have, that the county has, the state has, we see it at the school district. The data says we have a race issue. Affirmative action is not about giving someone unqualified an opportunity, it's giving someone that is qualified the opportunity. The thing I want to bring back to you is that there's data that says with a region that is equitable, it would add four billion dollars to the economic activity of this region. Diversity is not something to fight against, it's something to fight for. Diversity in this community would add another four billion dollars of economic activity. So for those that potentially might be against this, whether here at the city, at the county or the state level, we're fighting against ourselves to fight against having diverse businesses, public institutions. Since this affirmative ban has been enacted, we have people that say, well, we can't provide certain information by race now. We can't focus on African-American young men to address that issue because we can't fund that. We can't do certain things because this ban is in place. So I'm challenging you today and encouraging you, and prayerfully, that you'll take the leadership example of the county and also set, and set a standard for the state, that this state is for everyone, that this city is for everyone. And we finally address centuries, two-hundred-and-fifty years of free labor, a hundred-and-fifty years of systemic oppression, that this is a statement, this is a day, this is a time, that the city, the county send a message to the entire state that we are going to finally solve this. Let Omaha be the city on the hill. Let Omaha be the place that other cities across this country look to, across Republican, Democrat, and Independent, across every race, across every geography, that this is our moment. We have to refight this battle, but I can tell you that we have people of every color that are ready to fight this battle. God bless you. Thank you Councilman Gray for bringing this forward. Thank you City Council for sending the message to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the opponent, Larry Store.
Thank you, Larry Store, five-zero-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight-one-three-two. Um, I hope you guys will take my bill for parking and tow, tow bill for keeping me here so long this afternoon. I'm wondering under the Open Meetings Act whether twenty-five proponents is maybe a little bit unreasonable for a rule. Um, do they get to come back for five minutes more each? That's one of the rules, I think. I don't think people want to stay for that. But anyway, let's have some more history. Our nation was not founded in sixteen-ninety. I believe seventeen-seventy-six is the date. Sixteen-nineteen was one of the colonies, Jamestown, but Jamestown actually was there in sixteen-oh-nine, so the New York Times is a liar. And we didn't bring slaves over in sixteen-oh-nine. I believe later on when slaves did come, oh, sixteen-oh-nine, I'm sorry, indentured servants. My, my ancestors might have been an indentured servant, a form of slavery. I don't think there were any blacks on that particular voyage and maybe not on the Mayflower. Yes, there was later in Jamestown and Jamestown failed because of a socialist experiment. Socialist is somewhat equated with Democrat. Democrat is somewhat associated with southern states. And in today's economy, today's United States, a lot of the major cities that are having extremely bad problems are controlled by Democrats. And gee whiz, North Omaha has, has a shooting about every day. I don't hear a shooting every day in Dundee or West Omaha. So let's be careful with the facts. Now I do agree with Brenda Council and Preston Love. I'm damn tired of it too. I started working in nineteen-sixty, well, part-time as a school student before nineteen-sixty-one. I've never had an employer encourage me to be racist. I've never had anyone tell me it was okay. I've had a lot of people say, oh, you, you know, be careful what you say, you may be interpreted wrong. And I've had a lot of employers say, you're out of here if you say anything like that. This is, this has gone on for so long, but why hasn't it been solved? Maybe it's human nature. We're not all good actors, are we? So let's quit pitting each other against each other and don't let these people that are being used by Marxists tell you otherwise. Black lives matters, yes. Words matter, laws matter. And by the way, this resolution, the ban on, how did, how did somebody ban affirmative action if it was, was that an unconstitutional act? Was affirmative action unconstitutional? Did it only apply to employers with twenty-five or more employees? Maybe the lawyers and the five-zero-one-C-three peoples have it wrong. Maybe they're part of the problem. Maybe part of the problem is outsiders, not from Omaha, that have a written agenda.
Your time's expired.
Black lives matters is one of those. Let's get them out of Omaha and teach our kids what Marxism is.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I, um, I'm going to try and go as fast as I can, but I'm going to be a few minutes. You are, so I'm, I'm, I'm letting you know that right now, that I'm, I'm going to be a few minutes here. Um, first of all, you know, those who are opposed to affirmative action, the main thing they say when they talk about they're being opposed to affirmative action is that it is refer, it reverse discrimination. So I'm trying to figure out the words on that because what you're saying to me is that, okay, discrimination is okay, but reverse discrimination is not okay. I don't, I don't know what that means, so I, I'm going to have to have somebody kind of explain that to me at some point. But one of the things I want to do today is I want to give somebody some history that people don't talk about and young people always talk about, and rightfully so, that, um, the, the history books are not reflective of, uh, the condition or the, uh, contributions or a number of other things that are related to black people specifically. And that's what I'm going to talk about today is black people specifically. And the history that I'm going to give is going to share with you, and I want to, I want to preface my remarks by saying, I'm a strong union man. I'm a strong union supporter. I was a union president when I was at Channel Seven. I was a regional president of unions. So what I'm going to say, uh, is going to be talking about unions, but it's going to be talking about the history. For example, if we're talking about affirmative action and if we're talking about people and we're using the definition that are used by those who are opposed to affirmative action, then white people have had affirmative actions since Reconstruction. And the reason that, that is accurate is because when you look at history, when you look at, for example, and I'm going to take horse racing for a minute, between Reconstruction and eighteen-ninety, the majority of jockeys who rode in the Kentucky Derby, the Preakness and a number of other things, were black jockeys. During those days, nine of the ten individuals who raced in the Kentucky Derby or any other horse racing event were black people. Then unions came in and then it began to move people, move black people out so that by nineteen-thirty, there was one black jockey. Hasn't been one since. Want to talk about the Davis Bacon Act for a minute because people talk about it from the perspective of the wages that are, that are made and people can make a good living. And I agree with all that stuff. But the fact of the matter is, is that when Davis Bacon was introduced in nineteen-thirty and nineteen-thirty-one, the preamble in that document said, "No black or other itinerant worker shall gain contracts with the federal government." So you began to move blacks out of the construction trades till by nineteen-thirty, there were very few in there and because of the unions and the structure that they set up, it was impossible for blacks to even get in to gain training or anything like that. And this went on for decades and decades. So to say that, uh, individuals, that, that we were not, and, and, and what, what's ironic about this is that black people built the White House. Well, let me back up. Black people built the White House twice because the first time it burned down during the War of eighteen-twelve. And then it was reconstructed again by blacks as well as other, uh, black workers built other edifices in Washington DC. But all of a sudden in nineteen-thirty, when the Depression came, uh, and people in the North were calling for these black contractors to build up north and others couldn't get, and, and whites couldn't get contracts because blacks were charging less money and doing more credible work, we had to create a law that eliminated what black people could do and what black people could be involved in. That happened in nineteen-thirty. I have a book. It's called Sun Downtowns. If you are serious about addressing this, whether you're black or white, if you're serious, you need to read this book because it talks about, among other things, fair housing. And it talks about the Fair Housing Administration specifically. During this time called Sun Downtowns, and let me tell you what a sundown town was. A sundown town was a town that started off with that despicable N-word. And, and in most towns, it had a sign that said, "N, don't let the sun set on your head in this town." In Millard and Elkhorn, there were more black people in nineteen-thirty than there are today. One individual, his name was W.J. Lockwood, who was the Assistant Director of Fair Housing. Because Fair Housing Administration was the, was the primary organization that made sure that suburbs and other areas of town outside of major cities were going to make sure that those suburbs stayed white. In fact, he said, and I quote, "W.J. Lockwood, um, the FHA has never insured a housing project of mixed occupancy." That was nineteen-sixty-eight. And President Obama had to come in and create another entity called Affirmative Fair Housing that this city just went through recently. Because to this day, the Fair Housing Administration has not moved on correcting the wrong that it did to black people for decades. They didn't do it and they still haven't done it. And it forced the Obama Administration to have to come up with an affirmative fair housing effort to try and get fair housing going again. There have been a number, I just wanted to give you all a couple of instances, because I can give you literally hundreds, where when black people were part of something and white people saw investment in it, blacks were moved out, whites were moved in. And they primarily used unions, the Congress, the Senate, legislatures, city councils and county boards to do this dirt. All of them were engaged in this. So what are we going to do now to address this? If we're going to have fair, decent, honest conversation, hurtful, sometimes hurtful conversation, if we're going to heal, these things have to occur. I want people to be informed. I want you to know the history of this country and I want you to know the things that happened that were legislated, things that happened that were forced by lynchings and other things. Um, I want people to understand our history, not to run from it, and this is not a blame game. And I understand that this is going to be a challenge for some of our elected officials. But if people are not in favor of this affirmative action ban, re, eliminating this ban on affirmative action, don't just tell me, no, tell me what you're for. Because if you're for the status quo, then I know you're not for us and I know you're not for this country. Because you can't be for this country, as Mr. Barney pointed out, you can't be for, you can't be for this city when we know that diversity brings dollars. If that's all we were interested in, diversity brings dollars. But we have to understand that we have an obligation to each other to correct the wrongs that have been done in this community for centuries. And if we don't correct it, and don't listen to the people that tell you, I don't even "I don't even know a Marxist." So this is not about Marxism or any of these other things that people try to throw at you to make you think that somehow this movement has somehow been infiltrated. What this is about is finally, and hopefully, bringing about equity. But the only time that's going to happen is if we have honest, deep, thorough conversation. Some of it's going to hurt. What I shared with you today, most whites don't even know that. They don't even know that based on what was done in the past, they have reaped the benefit, just in terms of housing alone, over $300 trillion of property as a result of fair housing and FHA and VA programs that we, I even as a veteran, couldn't take part in for a long period of time. So understand what I'm saying here. Hopefully you do. We have to have honest, decent, thoughtful conversation. But in order to address the wrongs that have been done in this society to specifically black people for as long as our sojourn has been in this country, we need to recognize that if we're going to save our country and not destroy it from within, and we look at societies, we have looked at societies all the way back to Babylon. And they failed because the internal strife created the opportunity for outsiders to come in and conquer those nations. Are we going to be next? The question is up to us. But for me, it starts with eliminating the structure of racism. Eliminating those barriers that cause us to have these kinds of discussions. We've got to get at the structure. And part of that structure is this ban on affirmative action. I know it's going to be a tough fight, but we got to be committed to it if we're going to be successful as a nation, as a country, as a city, as a state. I believe strongly in our ability to come together. But if we can't, time will tell. With that, Mr. President, I thank you for the time and I make the motion to approve this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of this measure as well. Thank Councilman Gray for putting it on our agenda and just seconded the resolution. I opposed the ban of affirmative action in 2008 as well. And when we were elected in 2009, three of us, at that time, about six months later, Councilman Jerem, Councilman Gray and myself, we thought about, we, we went about addressing that issue as it impacted city government. Because what it did was it no longer allowed affirmative action in hiring. And I do think it's important that our city workforce reflects our community and especially as that impacts our police and firefighters. We went about scrutinizing the testing process and the hiring process. And I think we have made progress in that since then. But to Chief Warren's comments and to Gina Glover's comments from the Fire, Fire Department, it's still way too hard to get there. It's a struggle to get there every day without affirmative action. We took a look at what used to be the city's female and minority-owned business program that did seek to engage female and minority-owned businesses in city contracting opportunities. Something I worked on in the mayor's office. In fact, with Commissioner Rogers, if he's still here. That could no longer be implemented in the city government due to the ban that was approved by voters. So we went about restructuring something different, which is now called the Small and Emerging Business Program that is now in ordinance and has been effective at city contracting to small emerging businesses, especially businesses in areas of disadvantage within the city. But that's not enough either. And we'd like it to be doing more. We also funded things like, for the first time, Heartland Workforce Solutions that did engage in workforce training to help address this issue. And we're committed to that ongoing funding of that program and that has been effective over the years. We also funded a program called the REACH Program that seeks to help minority-owned businesses and small emerging businesses grow and engage these opportunities and be effective. And we're committed to that as well. But I think that's not enough either. And I have to believe that had 424 not been successful and have affirmative action not have been repealed, it would have been much more successful in these areas as we sit here today. So I do think it's a major opportunity for us to reestablish that and to ask the legislature to put that back on the ballot. And I think especially with what's happened just recently, which is the voters approved a $200 million bond issue for our streets. Huge opportunity there for work and employment. We have a $2 billion sewer program, two-thirds of which, by the way, has not even been spent yet for the next 10 to 15 years. Another huge opportunity for employment and diversity and inclusion. So I am supportive of this today and I think it will help us address many of the issues we were just talking about in the previous item, when we talk about economic disparities and we talk about poverty and certainly equal opportunity. And I think it's important for us to demonstrate that here today with this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, there are two or three people up here been really at work, even though there has been a ban. And if you had the opportunity to sit in some of the committee meetings, as I do, you would hear, you would hear Ben, and I'll call him Ben because that's who he is, how he's fighting all the time trying to make things better. I mean, I'm thoroughly impressed. And same way with, with Pete. The thing today, I would have felt a little bit more comfortable, to be honest with you, if I would have seen some people from the business world down here talking to us, from the mayor's office down here talking to us. I know this is your platform and I, I understand that. But to make this work, you need the whole ballgame. There's just one thing before I end, or two things. I know a lot of people were concerned about the not having teachers of color in their classroom. Well, I'm a retired principal and, and from the Millard Schools. And I can tell you, over the years, they sent some of us all over the country trying to find teachers of color. They didn't want to come here. I don't know if it's because of the culture. It could have been. But a lot of it was because of the money. They could get, make more, much more money some of the places. So I'm just being honest with you. We, I'd be, I had some nice little jaunts looking for teachers and almost begging for them to come. But they just, a few would come, but they, it just didn't seem to be their, their ballgame. So for those of you who did not have, you had teachers who looked like me, some schools, I'm, I'm sure, may have made that decision. But we tried hard. A number of us tried hard. And if we tried hard in Millard, I know OPS had to be trying very hard. I know they had to be. But you know, one thing, and I appreciate giving everybody the opportunity to, to speak today. But you don't need us. You may need our support. You need to find, what we're doing here, we're going to urge the legislature to take this up. All you need is one senator to carry a bill. If he, he or she carries that bill, it is heard. Any bill that a senator will take, they will bring it forth and it will be discussed. And you know that, Brenda. So you don't need us. You need us to say, yes, this is a great idea. But talk about some of your state senators who you know in your areas. And this should be something that they say, hey, I'm going to try this. Now, be honest, I think it's going to be a difficult task because you had indicated you may try to do it this summer. But the, with, what the legislature was dealing with this summer on property tax and business incentives, I don't know if it'll be time for this, but at least you get it going. But you, all you need is a state senator to say, I want to do this. Of course, it's unbelievable if you'd have the council or the commissioner and the mayor saying this is great, plus all of the people who spoke to us today. You just need to talk to one state senator to carry this. And that's, that's the way it works. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm first going to start out by, as you'll notice, I usually don't sit here. I'm a little further. It's not because of, they're trying to distance me and Benny some more, but... So Councilmember Melton is not here today. But she, she sent me an email and asked me to read the following statement. So I'm going to start with that for the, for the record. And I'll, I'll give it to the cork as well. It starts, "I am sorry I'm missing the meeting today as I'm not feeling well. However, I'm watching you all by live stream. It is important that we, as elected officials and as a community, listen and attempt to understand each other and seek resolutions that eliminate discriminatory practices, keep all citizens safe and allow every person an equal opportunity for economic stability and achieving any dream. As the only female on our council, I'm very fortunate that each and every male colleague has always treated me with respect. We all share one common goal of making Omaha a place where every person in the community feels welcome and loved. We strive for economic growth in all areas of our city and have worked together to increase funding for Heartland Workforce, Step Up Program, REACH and other programming that assists and encourages entrepreneurship, job training and providing the opportunity to all who seek a better life. Although we share a common goal, we do often differ on how to achieve it. The intent of affirmative action to increase opportunities for women and minorities is good, but the implementation does not always foster the intended result of inclusion and unification. I will continue to work with you in our quest to have a city where everyone has equal opportunity, education, protection regardless of race, gender or creed. But I do not support preferences or discrimination of any kind. Again, I'm sorry I could not be with you today. I look forward to continuing this discussion and finding solutions to achieve our common goal." And that was from Amy Melton. So then I, I wanted to bring up some other points to, to consider. As been, as has been mentioned by some, the citizens did overwhelmingly vote for Initiative 424 some 12 years ago. I think the, the gap was 58 to 42, which effectively did away with affirmative action in the state of Nebraska. But the, the actual language of the amendment, I'm sorry, Preston, I'm not as good as you, so I am going to refer to some notes. The actual amendment stated that "the state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity or national origin in the operation, in the operation of public employment, public education or public, public contracting." In essence, it codified that all are to be treated equally. Another point to consider is the arguments that have been made that affirmative action is actually a form of discrimination. So if the goal is to remedy a disadvantage, the award would be granted on the basis of that disadvantage, not on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity or national origin. Another point to consider is the concept or underlying assumption that only minorities can add certain ideas or perspectives is worrisome for it implies that all minorities think a certain or the same way. To make that assumption is actually racist. Meritocracy is also another point to consider. And meritocracy is a social system that advancement should be based on an individual's capabilities and merits. Not on nepotism, which we've seen in some of our city employment, not on family wealth, social status or the like. According to an article in the Stanford Magazine, merit should be an individual achievement, not just grades or test scores, but a broad range of accomplishments in areas such as athletics or music or drama or social clubs or other extracurricular activities. However, race, ethnicity, gender or sexual preferences or traits and not achievements. Since the adoption, the adoption of 424 and pre-COVID, Nebraska's unemployment rate for the black population were at all-time lows. One other point to consider is, and I had this conversation actually with, I apologize to the electronic media that's here, but I had a conversation with the print media over the weekend about an article that ran about the Back the Blues support protest or, or gathering at the, at Memorial Park. And Aaron Sanderford was, was the author of that article. And he sent it to me. I was actually out of town with my family. And I, I read it and I, I responded. He asked me what I thought about it. And I responded, you know, Aaron, this is how all articles should be written. And, and, and this is the reason why I said that to him. Not once in that article, not once, except for, I think there was one positive that, that had where it mentioned the James Skirlock and Gardner, you know, being Skirlock black and Gardner white. Not once did it mention anything about the ethnicity, the gender, the race of any of the speakers at the event. And I said to Aaron, I, I think that's great. Not once did it matter the color, the ethnicity, the race, the gender, the sexual preference of those that were speaking. I think that's, I think that's something that is something we should all strive for. Finally, racism unfortunately is a part of the past. And unfortunately, it's also a problem that exists today. And sadly, it will probably exist for some level in, in the future. But the racist past cannot be undone with more racism. And again, I'm referring to the Stanford Magazine article that "Race-conscious programs betray Martin Luther King's dream of a colorblind society. And the heightened racial sensitivity that cause, they cause is a source of acrimony and tension instead of healing." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Pauls.
To be honest with you, Councilman Harding, you had some very stimulating ideas there. But I think we're at the point now that I'm willing to say, let's talk about this some more. Not us, but having the state legislature. There will be some discussion and it may go up or down. But instead of just stopping, let's let the dialogue continue because I've heard a number of people said, "We want to talk and we want you to listen to us." Now, that's beyond us. So I'm willing to say, let's move it on. And because we're, we're not going to make the decision whether it's going up or down. I mean, asking or requesting for somebody else, they're going to be making the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the, in the discussion, when, when we're talking about race and we're talking about if we create some sort of a mechanism that... Let me back up. COVID-19 is affecting most of the, and most of the countries, affecting more black people than it is anyone else because we don't have healthcare and we don't have the access to healthcare. Most of us, the, most African-Americans are going to lose their jobs because they were in the service industry because they couldn't get other employment anywhere else or were never trained for it or never had the education for it. My question is going to always be, if we're not going to do this, if we're not going to address it this way, how do we address it? Because you're not going to be able to address it without saying to some extent that people who have been disadvantaged and disenfranchised for 400 years, that somehow we don't have, that, that there's no mechanism available for us to catch up? I mean, or, or to even be on a level playing field? And when we're talking, we're talking about equity, as Commissioner Rogers talked about earlier, we're not talking about equality. Equity means that there are other tools that need to be available for those who have been discriminated against in the past to catch up. Or if not catch up, at least their future generations have a better chance of some of the American dream that most whites live. So I'm, I guess I continue to ask the question, if not this, then what? If we're not going to do this, what are we going to do? To me, it starts with this. And we can continue to have conversation and so forth after... To me, it starts with this, and we can continue to have conversation and so forth after we do this. But the fact of the matter is, the reason why this was done, and let's not be, let's not mince words, the reason that was done because of racism in this state, that's why it was done. No other reason. No other reason. And the language that was used confused people to the extent that a number of black folks voted for something that they thought was one thing and found out it was another. They got tricked. That's what happened. So if we're going to address it, we need to address it through this mechanism, and if we don't have this mechanism, tell me what mechanism you want to use. I'm open. I'm open to anything but the status quo. If that's what we're going to do, then we're going to continue to have problems in this country, and in this state, and in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be honest, I just found out about this resolution on Thursday, or maybe it was the day after when I got to it, when we normally see the agenda that's sent out. So this isn't something we've had a lot of time to prepare for, but we didn't need that much time. I mean, let's be honest. We're here where we are because a change needs to be made. I ran into Councilmember Gray in the hall, and usually we'll have agenda items and we'll, and then, and forgive me, I'm going to be all over the place because I don't have anything wrote down, so just bear with me. And I ran into him in the hall and I said, "Hey, you know, like, usually what we do on items is, hey, how come I didn't hear anything about this?" And he said, "Vinnie, I want you to listen to what I have to say, and I want you to make a decision." But little did he know, I already know my decision, and you'll find out when we vote. But we sit here, week after week, like sponges, taking all this in, all this information that's being said, and, and there comes a time, just like a sponge, what it does, you have to squeeze it, and the water has to come out, right? That's where we're at. There, there's a time for change, and it's now. We can keep talking about what we're going to do, and I hear all, and, and no disrespect for those who came and showed up, and I appreciate everybody for being here, but some of the comments, they need to be heard, but they need to be heard at your school board, or whoever else would make those decisions. I agree with you, but this isn't the, the forum for that. And when you talk about schools, maybe it's because I grew up in a high-poverty area. I had diversity in my school. It was always a strength. As a matter of fact, Mrs. Irwin in second and third grade both, because we had a small school, was my schoolteacher, and it continued on with different teachers that I had. So I, I guess, to each person on how you're raised and where you're raised, on, on how you look at things, but it doesn't mean that you can't take everything in and make the decision to make the right decision on where we need to be. So I want to thank Pete and Ben both for where we're at. There's a, a lot of speakers I heard today that you sit here like the sponge again and you hear it, and I don't know if Brenda Council's still here, maybe. And I don't want to call you out, but every time I hear you speak in public over the last few years, I like want to charge behind the door after you, because what comes out of your mouth is the absolute truth. So thank you for that. And Chief Warren, I mean, we've talked out of this setting before, and to hear you say that affirmative action possibly gave you the opportunity to be where you, where you achieved in the police department, that really sets in, because your name is mentioned in some of the greatest police chiefs that Omaha's ever had. So if you think about that, and you think about all the different departments we have in the city, and all those people that we work with, that we approve to get a job here, if they had that opportunity in every department, in every position that they would get, to know that they could be the best that we could possibly and mention that we could ever have, I mean, I don't, I don't need to say anymore, that's where I'm at. So Ben, thank you, as always. You're, you're always on the right track on stuff. Well, I, I take that back, I shouldn't say always. Most of the time. I want you to be able to leave the room at the end of the day, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. I'd just like to add a different perspective. Certainly, I'm not one who grew up in a predominantly minority community, just the opposite. Although the first 12 of my, years of my life, I lived about a half an hour south of the George Washington Bridge, and it was a pretty diverse community. And, and I'd like to think that, you know, the lessons I learned in, in that part of the country I carry with me today, and how I interact with people and treat people. When, for a variety of circumstances, my family moved to the north side of New York City and to Connecticut, what a different world that is. And there was one African-American in my class, high school class, of about 200 people. His name was Steve. And Steve was an extraordinary athlete and was a friend of mine. And something happened our senior year, not uncommon with high school kids, is that they sometimes make mistakes, and Steve went to our homecoming dance, as I believe, with some friends, and in their car, there were some bottles of beer. There's one, one student got suspended. It was Steve. And one person was kicked off of the sports teams because of that. As a consequence, it was Steve. Steve was a resilient, exceptional person, still is. He lives in Atlanta today. He proudly served our country for a couple decades in the Army, and went to combat for our country, notwithstanding his experiences. And I've carried with me that memory vividly today, as it was then, thinking, there's just so much more that people who don't come from privilege have to overcome in their lives. And the most basic need in life is to provide for yourself and your loved ones through working. And the, the playing field in, in government, in the government sector, which is what this affirmative action program was all about, was, as many people here said, was not basically to give someone advantage. It was just, it was just the opposite, really, in so many respects, and I don't need to repeat why here, but as a lawyer, and having had experience working on some ballot issues in this state, I am all too familiar with the wordsmithing that is done by highly-paid attorneys on how ballot initiatives are worded. And if you read this one, you can't help but know that people were, in my mind, as I view it, duped into thinking they were voting for the opposite of what they wanted. Ben, Gray, and I talked about this shortly after we got elected. I remember vividly, I come into this courthouse very regularly, although not so much since COVID, because a lot of the courts' things are being done on video conferencing, but there was an African-American man collecting signatures to place this ballot initiative up for vote, and I stopped on my way in and asked him, I said, "Do you really know what you're doing here?" And what a telltale situation it was. He said, "Man, this is the only job I could get." So here was a person working, because that's the only job he could get to place a ballot initiative on that was so contrary to his economic interests, and that of so many others, I just thought, "What, what a horrible situation." We have done some good things in this council, but as one of our speakers pointed out, if you look at the budget, yeah, it's great that we do the Step Up Program. We didn't have that before 2009, when a number of us got elected, or REACH, or Heartland Workforce Solutions. But when, we have examples of people that I have met, because my good friend Ben Gray and I have driven about the community together, just a few blocks north and west of 24th and Lake. On one of those drives, I met an African-American man sitting on his porch watching the sewer separation project construction, and we stopped and talked to him, because Ben's so friendly. He just, he wondered, you know, why he couldn't get a job. He asked, and he was told, "They need him." So here's someone looking at a government contract job who, who had no employment, who wanted a job, needed a job, asked about a job, couldn't get a job, and then I couldn't imagine the, the indignity of what he had to suffer by watching people do government work in his community who didn't look like his community. You know? So we passed the, the ordinance in the aftermath of, of the, this Initiative 424 to create the, the small and emerging small business ordinance, and it's had some positive impact, but like our budgeting that one speaker pointed out, it's so, it's so, it's pittance compared to what's needed. The emerging small and small business ordinance is, is a fraction of what is needed. The history of our city in this area is not pretty. It, it is not. You wonder why there's no minorities, or there've been so few in command positions? Because there've been lawsuits to stop it. Imagine that. Our city has changed its policy over the years on the promotion process that, that has resulted, in my opinion, in the very situation we're in. And how do we get out of those things? How do we begin to address them if we don't change the wrongs that I see were done when 424 passed? And it's wrong because, in my view, it tricked people. They really didn't understand it. And, you know, Preston Love said he didn't want to be here another 50, 60 years. We'll be here another 100, 200, 300 years talking about the same things, or the people who follow us, because we're not getting at the core problems. We're not. And on August 11, you're going to hear the mayor propose and introduce her budget next, next week, and under our city charter, the mayor proposes the budget. And then for some things, it takes four votes to change, if we want to amend the budget, five votes for other things. And if you want more funding to go into the programs to, to help address the wrongs, your voices need to be heard August 11, right here, at 6:30. But what happens if this resolution passes here today? We have to find a state senator who's willing to introduce the legislative resolution to place the ballot initiative on their agenda. And I don't imagine that's going to be any small task. And so your voices can't stop here. We have to let our state senators know, and Lincoln, how important this is, that this wrong be addressed again and corrected. And I hope it passes. There's been a motion, there's been a second, I'm happy to support it. I think it's the right thing to do. It's the, it's the least we can do is to let the legislature know that the largest community of its state, with almost a half a million people, believe this important enough that they take, under their rules, a little bit of their time this year, to let the people vote on this. With that, roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Hartwood Estates located northwest of 151st and Pine Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communication in opposition.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, my name's Joe Flaxbeard with Lampar Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road. On behalf of the applicant, we're here today to answer any questions on this preliminary plat. We have received the planning board's recommendation and comments. We've been actively working with them and will continue to work with them as we approach final plat for the continued resolution of those. And we have received a communication in opposition about a neighboring homeowner dispute between some trees on a property line. Bart Emanuel with Applied Underwriters, the owner, developer on this property is here to answer any questions there. But they are working through a resolution with that property owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Horry. I am the homeowner at 14412 Shirley Circle. I hope everybody had the opportunity to review my opposition email that I had sent. I think I'll just kind of go through my opposition email and maybe the concerns I addressed within that email. Number one, city application, application dated April 29. Application page four of seven, section two, special information, environmental tree canopy mitigation. The pre, the previously approved tree mitigation plan for the South Farm Development showed no mitigation plan was required. The trees within this portion of this subdivision were to be retained. However, the newly submitted materials indicated the canopy of the subject site is now to be removed. Based on this information provided, 577 trees will be needed to be planted. Furthermore, goes continues on. Concern number one, A, the applicant through the Applied Underwriters contacted, contracted with Mecko Henning Contracting, Inc., and subcontractor through S&amp;N Landscaping, under the direction of Bart Emanuel. To begin removing trees and brush cleanup on the entry of 144th Street, the contractor crossed my property line and removed 27 various trees on my property parcel. All of those photos are attached within their email. Concern one, B, the applicant's ability to contract slash control subcontracting execution through S&amp;N Landscaping. Currently, to my knowledge, this contractor is not a holder of an arborist license as a city of Omaha requirement for any tree removal project. I haven't, I haven't read the tree mitigation plans, so I'm not sure if that, that is in fact a requirement of the tree mitigation plan. I assume it is based as a city requirement. One, C, photos of this contractor within the, within the tree without proper ocean safety requirements, safety equipment, rather, on the property parcel. One, D, concern of the redheaded Wedpecker home that was destroyed within one of the oak trees that were demolished by the contractor and which is protected under federal law. Part two, city application dated April 29. Application page five of seven, section two, special information, the land use and planning, paragraph three. The applicant was encouraged to submit a consistent planning, or, excuse me, fencing plan for the lot and the frontages along Pine 151 Streets. Obviously, this is not in regards to my property parcel. However, I have a concern with the, the applicant's inability to establish property, property lines and coordinate requirements, the individual homeowners requiring fencing placement or the chapter 55 zoning requirements. Reference my incident one, A, where no property lines were completed prior to the contractor beginning work and coming onto the property and cutting down trees. And in closing, I'd like to speak from the meeting minutes that was held on May 6. I was not here during that time. I read the meeting minutes that were attached to the agenda. Mr. Bart Emanuel from Applied Underwriters appeared before this board on behalf of the developer. Mr. Emanuel stressed that he, that they are committed to preserving as many trees as possible on the site. Mr. Emanuel stated that he understands how important it is and how it, and that he is responsible for the development, and he welcomes anyone to come to him with questions or concerns. However, I now have a question. Why if on May 6, this, this board sat and heard you and your team commit to the preserving of trees, and less than two weeks later, you're cutting down several trees, to some of which were not even on the property parcel development? And that none of my answers and none of my concerns have been addressed via phone or email? I asked the city of Omaha and I asked the City of Omaha and this city council to review the concerns that I've outlined today prior to the approval of his zoning request.
Thank you. Now, just so, if you could come back to my guy to question.
Yes, sir.
Was your concern that there were trees cut down on your property?
I'm concerned that the applicant cannot complete the required, the requirements of the applicant, of the application that stated the tree mitigation plan. They have not followed through with that tree mitigation plan. Yes, the property damage that has been had on my property is a separate issue. However, it's an example of their inability to perform per the application that they submitted to the city council.
Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any other opponents? Did you want to address?
Yeah, so.
I mean, we're here on the preliminary plat, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so. I know you'll continue to meet. This has to come back again for the final plat.
That's correct. So one thing Mr. Herr brought up was the tree mitigation plan. That was something that was of discussion at Planning Board. At the time when we made our Planning Board application for preliminary plat, our grading extents for this Hartwood Estates residential project was larger than it is currently proposed. In the meantime, since that Planning Board hearing in May to us being here today, we have, along with Bart and his team, refined those grading limits, pulled those in more, and we provided an updated tree canopy disturbance calculation to the Planning Department that shows that the scaled back impacts to the existing tree canopy is not, a tree mitigation plan is not required due to the minimization of the impacts, I should say. Obviously, that's a separate issue than the tree removal dispute in relation to the other property owner's property. But I just wanted to touch on that tree mitigation because it has been something that's evolved since the May 6 plan.
Thank you. Yeah, we can't get into if there was some trespass or something in trees on his property. I was going to say, we can't handle that here in this forum.
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. President. So I was going to address a couple of those, one that you just brought up too about the tree removal being a civil issue. And I think Jason also kind of acknowledged that one. And Jason, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to respond to you. As I mentioned earlier, I was out of town until late on Sunday. And I think this email came in last Thursday. And I had some conversations with the planning director about this. So I wanted to make sure that some of these issues were brought up today. And so that's why we're here today. And also, as the president of the council just mentioned a minute ago, this is for the preliminary plat. It will still have to go back through Planning Board for final plat and then back to us. And so these concerns will be worked out through those processes too. I guess, I just have one question out of curiosity. I apologize for asking questions without knowing the answers, but I see the planning director back there. I don't see the parks director here, and I think it's probably more a parks issue. But are you required to have an arborist license in order to be able to remove trees? Actually, I should ask you, Vinnie. Is that, is that a requirement? Okay. And I would say maybe, Bart, if that's, you might want to check with your contractor to make sure that they have the proper licenses and things like that. But again, I think these issues will be answered and addressed after preliminary plat or before final plat's approved. So with that, I'll move for the approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Councilmember Palermo.
So, I mean, I did want to bring this up because obviously when we have, whether it's the preliminary plat or what it is, but when we have sides telling us one thing, and I'll be honest, I did not go back through to see if that's exactly what was discussed on if this mitigation was necessary or not. But I will, and if that's what was said here on the record and that isn't what happened, I understand this is a different part of it, but you see how you're setting up to not be a good neighbor in this position where what is being told either to us on the record or maybe the neighbors or future neighbors that I'm going to have some stiff questions moving forward. Fair enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll just, Bart, if you want to come up and address, I know this was brought up at Planning Board, the tree mitigation, and there were some, there was some conversation about that and some representations as to what the developer was going to commit to. And it seemed like the, and I know not all the neighbors probably who could be, who wanted to be there could be there, but I think there was, there were representations made and, yeah, please, if you'd like, representations made and commitments that you made as well.
Oh, absolutely. Bart Emanuel with Applied Underwriters, 10805 Old Mill Road. Yes, we are committed, you know, as I've stated before, you know, for tree mitigation. We don't want to cut out any trees we don't feel are viable to the canopy. We did have people go in there and we were cleaning out dead trees, dead limbs. I was trying to clean up that tree line between Harvey Oaks and the development, just as an aesthetic thing for not only us, but also for the neighbors that back up to that tree line that runs down across there. And the folks that we brought, I had come in there to do that, they cut out some mulberry trees, I know for a fact. And I'm not going to get into Mr. Herr's property that's on the other end of the development. We'll deal with that accordingly. But as far as the tree mitigation, and as Joe alluded to, we did resubmit because we were taking out a lot of trees there, and that isn't our goal. We want to keep as many trees in the estate lots due to the fact that these are very high priced lots that these folks are going to be purchasing in the estate portion here. And we want as many trees as we can possibly have there. There's no reason to be taking these things out. So if anybody does have any questions or concerns, again, I'm available to have a conversation about that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Was there a motion?
There is a motion.
Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero. Next, I'm not sure if city council wants to waive city council liquor rule six on items 11 to 16.
Hearing no motion.
To waive the liquor rule? We haven't.
And let's just let the applicants know they'll probably be expected to.
Sounds good.
Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero. Items 11 and 12 can be considered together to consider applications for class CG liquor licenses for Old Chicago Pizza and Tap Room located at 13110 Birch Drive, Bay 180 and 2643 South 144th Street.
The public hearings on items 11 and 12 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion to approve. Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a class D liquor license for Maiden Omaha located at 1012 Howard Street.
Public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 14 and 15. Applications to consider class D liquor licenses for MoSmart 5 located at 8242 Maple Street and MoSmart 6 located at 720 North 18th Court. A is communication in opposition.
The public hearing on items 14 and 15 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Given our conversation about waiving the rules there, I didn't expect that the applicant from number 14 would be here at 82nd and Maple.
I'm, well, I'm representing MoSmart right now.
Okay. Maybe you can come down to the podium then. And it's your name and address, and I have a few questions for you.
Okay, my name is Mary Herr, 11936 Wigglet Plaza, Omaha. I'm representing Imperial Reliance, MoSmart.
Great, thank you for being here. So this is the first time we've seen this application in terms of a new ownership at 82nd and Maple, which did previously have a liquor license. But I did have a few communications in opposition to it, as noted here on the agenda. And then had some concern when it was, when representatives were here previously, that it really didn't feel like those individuals at least understood their responsibilities in terms of having a liquor license and all of that, I mean, all that entails, as well as the responsibility of the neighborhood that does have some concerns right there, especially as it applies to, you know, trash and litter and things of that nature. And I think there were some back issues, as I recall, financially with either the city or the state with that particular individual. So I'll first give you an opportunity to address those issues. I assume those have all been.
I'm not sure. I mean, I managed the one on, like, Old Mill or whatever, and we have considerably cleaned it up in both of them. And I know that previously it was owned by White Oak Station, which now it is Imperial Reliance, so it's a totally different. We're trying to rebrand and trying to get everything put back together, make a neighborhood gas stations again.
Okay. Are the, so it's totally new ownership? Are there any of the previous individuals still involved with that new LLC?
I'm not, I really can't answer that for you right now. I, I'm, they're totally separate is the way I look at it or whatever, so.
Okay. And it sounds like you're most familiar with the Old Mill location rather than.
Yeah, I'm really familiar with the Old Mill one.
Okay.
I am taking the other one over though or stuff too, so.
Okay, so you'll be responsible for 82nd and Maple as well?
Yes, I'm going to be the manager there too.
Okay. Well, I would just ask you to be sensitive to those issues.
Definitely.
And be a good operator and respond to the concerns that the neighbors have expressed about litter and making sure the site is clean.
It's already been cleaned up once or twice already, so I guarantee that.
I appreciate you doing that. Thank you for that. And then maybe just a question to the clerk and city laws. My understanding that we have checked the previous application and those issues are resolved and we feel this is a different LLC that is presenting a responsible application to us here today.
Correct.
All right, thank you. With that, I don't see any other lights, so I will motion to approve number 14 and number 15.
Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero. Item 16, to consider an addition application for the Green Room's Class I liquor license located at 306 South 16th Street, unit 102 and 103, to add an outdoor area approximately 30 feet by 14 feet. A is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits. B is communication and support. C is communication in opposition.
Public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, my name is Jim Henderson, and I am at 1144th North 11th Street is where my office is located. I am a licensed commercial general contractor representing these, representing these owners. And I am a proponent on this in regards to every aspect of it, taking into consideration all the dimensions on this. We, and, you know, thinking about the neighbors, the city sidewalk, we did submit an architect's stamp drawing for permit review, which has been approved and released. And it's, again, it is a 14 and a half foot by 30 feet, leaving another 16 to 18 feet for pedestrian traffic. So we've kept everyone in mind and we think it's going to be a great addition and for everyone, all the neighbors and everyone involved.
Stay close by. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Do you have a member of the, your client here today or is?
Yeah, yes.
The Green Room that's owners?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up, guys.
How are you doing today, guys?
Good to see you again.
Names and addresses?
Andrew Mead, 168 Crestmont Drive, Council Bluffs.
Nathan Verzal, 11065 North Lakeshore Drive, Blair.
You're doing a good job. There has been concerns previously in that neighborhood, as you know.
Oh, yeah.
Things, people worried about getting out of control again and not wanting to go back to those days. So a couple of questions I have for you in terms of the outdoor area. First, you understand that it's subject to you getting permits and the lease. And then second, do you have plans for outdoor music, either amplified or live?
No, I doubt we do.
Other than what we've had, we do have a speaker on the front of the building, just to kind of liven up the neighborhood. We keep that volume.
I know you do.
Oh, you've been down? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Good. And I figured after you dropped our class C to a class I, you'd come check us out.
Right.
I hope we've done a good job being members of the community.
The secret shopper. It's easy to do with math.
Well, we're pretty close, right?
Okay. All right, well, you've answered my concerns and keep up the good work.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Subject to the permits. Second, roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda item 17 was held June 23, 2020. Roll call.
Harding. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pass six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 54 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good.
Good. Been a long day, hasn't it? I would just like to say, first of all, my name is Kevin Reddick. I'm the owner of Husker Tree and Landscaping, Reddick Management Corporation, and I'm here for agenda item number 44.
Your address?
My address is 5417 North 50th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I have a couple of things I like to put on display. How do I do that?
You just put them face up on that Elmo there and it'll broadcast them onto the screen.
Okay, I'm going to try to make this quick as possible.
Just lay them down. There you go. And then if you want to zoom in or zoom out, it's on top of the device. That's the arm that sticks up. You'll see the button. You just push it one way or the other.
This should be good. This is a copy of a print for site removal plan, Highlander East Site Demolition that's coming up. Okay, so this is one area here, Parker Street between 29th and Parker and Blondo. This is number one. Number two, this is a picture of Highlander Tree Removal, the project that I had bid on last year. I'm pretty sure you remember that one, don't you, sir? Okay, good. This is some of the same work area, scope of work and reference to tree removal here on number two. Highlander Tree Removal Phase Two, Husker Tree and Landscaping, lot identification number. This is area here. 29th, Parker, Blondo area, right there. This is number four. Block number 2827, similar area there. There's a tree right there. Number five, block A, lot 63H, 64H, 65H, 66H, 67H, and 68D. This is block, block A, lot 71 and 72. This was what the bid was last year.
Could you?
Okay.
Other way. There you go.
Okay, yeah, okay. This right here was last year. Reddick Management Corp. debid Husker Tree and Landscaping was the low bidder on that particular project at $383,000, $150. And we had other people that bid. Blade Master was the high bidder on that project. Blade Master was the high bidder on that project. This is, uh, this is the intent to award, notification of intent to award to Blade This is the intent to award letter for Blade Master Grounds and Maintenance, okay? The reason why I'm here today, uh, and it's, it's really not by ham, hamstance that I'm here today, because what I've heard on items number eight and nine is a prime example of why I'm here. Okay? Uh, I'm a Section III business entity. I'm a veteran-owned business. I'm a Tier One contractor, and I had bid that project to 100% self, uh, self-perform, okay? What, the main issue is that when I came to city council to, uh, deal with the appeal on the rejection of my bid, um, it was because of the recipient of the HUD funds to do the outreach, okay? Well, based upon that experience, the city planning department, one of the lady's names is Alyssa, Alyssa, um, she sent me an email on May the 13th during an outreach as well as Christian Esbenosa. And when I was here, Councilman Ben Gray tried to explain to the council that it wasn't my responsibility, because at that time, I was not a recipient of any funds on that particular project, okay? However, on this project, they did, and it also has some of the same scope of work that was under that particular project. So what the city planning department is doing is they are, they are subjugating some of that same scope of work on that project under this project here, okay? Uh, I have a HUD complaint that has not been resolved, and I'm pretty sure the city is aware of that. There has not been a final decision on that particular complaint. So to award a project to a contractor that has some of that same scope of work on it that has not been resolved yet is not right. It, it's not. That's my issue.
Thank you.
Okay? President, Jerm, uh, that day, do you remember that day when, when I was here?
Well, the council doesn't entertain questions during public hearing.
Oh, okay.
I might comment later.
All right. I, I really would appreciate that, because the main issue for the rejection of my appeal was because Christian Esbenosa, Ed Dantler, they didn't even have an exact answer. They went off of your answer, okay, what your decision was for that, for my appeal to be rejected. And now the city planning department, Human Rights and Relations, is doing outreach on this particular project. So on that ground, I oppose this particular project.
Thank you.
I just wanted to have public record of that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, uh, any, anyone else wishing to testify on any of the items on the consent
Good afternoon, President, the board and city council members. My name is Juanita Johnson.
Can you pull the mics a little closer? There you go.
My name is Juanita Johnson. I am the chairman of the Board for 24th Street Corridor Alliance. I'm also the president of Long School Neighborhood Association. I stand here today in opposition to number, item number 41. The Neighborhood Association, perhaps due to COVID, simply has not been engaged enough with Holy Name to discuss what's going on here. So I'd ask that we have more time to have an informed discussion about what's, what the intent is here. We're not saying there's something wrong with Holy Name. We're saying that the Neighborhood Association, we have an active Neighborhood Association that has been around for a long time. We're in the, we're in the, uh-
You're in the directory?
We're in the directory. I've been the president for over five years. My number has been the same. I haven't been hiding.
What's your address again, just for-
2520 Franklin Street.
Thank you. Okay.
The Neighborhood Association needs more time to have meaningful dialogue with Holy Name, so that we have a good understanding what their intent is. Thank you.
Thank you. Or, does anyone else wish to testify on any of the items on the agenda? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm, I'm not going to take very long here, because I've, I've spoken more than I usually do at these council meetings, but I did want to take the opportunity to recognize and be in full support of Thomas Warren as the new, uh, member to the MECA Board. Um, I think he's an excellent addition and, uh, my congratulations to him. But more than I think he's an excellent, uh, uh, excellent for this job, I think he will also work hard and he brings expertise and he brings credibility to, uh, this community and he always has. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, thank him for even wanting to be considered and, and appreciate him, and I look forward to you and, and having some really good luck in doing some things that, during some really tough times at MECA right now, but hope that you will do, I know that you will do an admirable job, as you've always done as police chief and as executive director of, uh, of the Urban League. I know that you will do a great job at this, and I know you personally won't accept anything less than doing a good job. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Two, maybe three items I would just address. One also was number 54. I support that as well, pointing Chief Warren to the MECA Board. He's actually replacing a person I nominated five years ago, who's, who's outgoing, who did a great job too, but I think he'll be a, a great addition to the board. I've always been impressed with him as our police chief and now president of the Urban League, and I have appreciated his leadership in recent weeks too and being so visible in the community. I don't know where he has all the time to do all these things, but I know he will and dedicate the necessary time to MECA too, so look forward to having him on there as well. Um, I want to address number 49 just for a minute too, and appreciate it, Councilmember Palermo's questions about it this morning at our pre-council meeting. This would be the national search for a new Parks, Parks Director and just a couple of comments. I, being on the Parks Committee and not having known about this was not helpful prior to our questions this morning. It would have been nice to have had, to have had that conversation in our committee, but I realize this was happening pretty quickly with Mr. Bench's recent decision to accept a different employment. I do have some experience with this. When, when the Commission and Visitors Bureau first became a city entity, it was my job to find that new director, and we did do a national search for that position. And I would, I would tell you it was not easy, and I think part of the timing concern as it is with this, this item is that regardless of who the mayor is, if there's a upcoming city election, it's pretty difficult to find anyone of national interest who would come to this particular spot, because unlike most CVBs, our director is, does serve the pleasure of the mayor, is not a civil service position. So that was one of the first things that kind of drew my concern, in addition to what could be a substantial cost to place this person. But having said that, and to Councilman Palermo's questions, I think that did clarify things enough for me this morning that I could see this through today, in that the only thing this contract guarantees is the expenses of this, of this contractor. Only if the person is placed are they then compensated 30% as described in this measure. And if placed and if that person leaves within six months, that the company is so obligated to find and replace that director. So, um, having had that clarification this morning, that made me feel better about having this on our agenda today, and I do think it's a very important position in city government, especially when we have some really exceptional assets coming into play for our city in coming years. And then lastly, I hadn't intended to speak on this, but I do appreciate the testimony that's given on number 41, and while, while that's not my district, it sure seems like a reasonable request that if you weren't informed of what seems to be a fairly substantial housing project there, that I'd, I'd be open to laying that over until that communication does take place.
Yeah, there's already been a request to take 41 off the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I was gonna say something on 41 too, so let me ask this. If you, if someone's gonna take that off, are we gonna continue the public hearing on that? Do you want me to address that now or should I wait till it's pulled off? Why don't I wait till it's pulled off?
It's already, it's already off. The motion would be to lay over and continue the public hearing. You could accomplish the same thing.
Um, okay, let me make my comments now and then you can, we can take the vote on it then. I, I do know that a planning board, I think Ms. Johnson also appeared at, at planning board or had some conversations also with the members of the planning department. I, I think there has been some communication. There are neighborhood meetings that were held. So I, I, I guess I'm at a loss to understand that there's a lack of communication there, but if, if the, if the, if it's gonna be the pleasure of, of the board or someone wants to make the, um, motion to lay it over, I'll, I guess if that's what they're, if that's what a member of this board wants, I'll, I'll go along with that. But I, I'm at a loss, I guess, at, at to the conversation or the, the mention that there's a lack of communication. The other one I was gonna, I'm just gonna pile on you, Chief. I, I think, um, I, I got to know the, the chief and, and his sister a little bit too over the years and, and, and I, I think you'll be a great addition to, to MECA, and I know that the, the, the board and, and the operation and Roger Dixon look forward to working with you, and I appreciate you taking on the, the task. And as Councilmember Festerson said, I don't know where you find the time, but thank you for your service, your past service to the city, and, and I appreciate the service you're gonna be continuing with MECA. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Yeah, just one question, Mr. President, and that's on item number 44, and that's for our attorney. If we have, was it, was it appropriate at this point to place this on the agenda if there is a dispute on this or, um, what, what in your, uh, give us some guidance on this. What would be the, I mean, can we vote on this today? Should we vote on this today? And, and if there is a dispute, should we have?
Well, and I don't, Bernard Inomash, Deputy City Attorney, I don't know all the details about the nature of the dispute, but what I will tell you is, I don't believe there is anything about him filing an appeal on that issue that in any way forecloses your ability to consider and may take action today. Now, whether you want to wait for that to be resolved before you move forward, that's certainly something that you could choose to do, but there isn't any legal obligation to wait.
I think if there's, if, Mr. President, if, if, to, if the council would indulge, I would like to take 44 off the agenda as well, because-
That's fine. I would just note, it does not appear, appear that there was a, an appeal on this agenda item by-
Oh, there wasn't?
No. But we, I, there's already been a request to take that item off consent for, for a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Harding, did you want to speak again?
No, thanks.
Okay. There you go. Councilmember Festerson, you indicated you were thinking about a motion to lay over on item 41. I don't know if you intended to make that motion or not.
Mr. Fansel, if you could come down just for a moment? I believe this would be in the planning department's jurisdiction. Um, I guess my question to you is, is there any critical timeframe here or what would be a reasonable lay, layover time to make sure the neighborhood is engaged?
Uh, Dave Fansel, City Planning. Out of the blue on this one, so we, we didn't talk about it pre-council and I didn't know that there was any opposition. As short as time possible, if you're gonna lay it over? I, I can't answer if it's gonna cause any delay, but I doubt it. If it's, you know, a week or two, wouldn't it probably be the end of the world?
Okay. That seemed reasonable to me, but may I defer to Mr. Gray since it's his district to get his thoughts?
I, I think we, I think we go ahead and lay it over. I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that there hasn't been any, no one is here, so I don't know that there hasn't been any communication, so I, I just think for purposes of, you know, keeping the record clear and, and making sure that the neighborhood is engaged, that maybe we just lay it over a week, not, no, no more than a week.
Motion to lay over one week.
Just to lay over, not to public hearing?
No, not the public hearing. We just lay it over one week.
Okay, so the clerk has pointed out, let's take the remainder of the agenda other than 41 and 44 for the consent. Is there-
We'll take 44.
Yeah.
If they're all items except for 41 and 44, sir.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, item 41 is on the floor. Is that with the, um, understanding that the planning department is gonna be reaching out to the neighborhood to provide a briefing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second, we have Vice President Palermo, do you wish? Okay, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, we're now on item 44. I do have a couple of questions. I don't know, um, Bernard, it, it doesn't appear that, um, did you come down, Mr. Ray? Yeah. Did your company bid on this, this time?
Uh, on this? No, sir.
On 44?
Um.
Because I was looking at the bidders. I didn't see your company's name.
No, sir.
Okay, so you didn't bid, you haven't appealed the bid, because you didn't bid.
Well, actually-
But you're just pointing out your, your position as to the project in terms of what happened when you bid it and that a part of what you bid on is in this bid.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Yes, sir. They had the same type of misunderstanding in reference to the language in the bid document, in reference to the outreach, because that's why they rebid the project, because the contractors, they didn't do the same thing either. However, uh, at the time that I bid the project last year, I did make a good faith effort. Matter of fact, Thomas Warren was one of the people that I emailed. You know, he was on that email list, and I pointed that out when we talked about the, when I came to the city council to appeal on the rejection.
Why didn't you bid on this one?
To be honest with you, sir, I just am not right now in that position to bid that whole scope of work. Some of the contractors, they did do the outreach thing via email with me as well as the city planning department and Human Rights and Relations Department, but my mom, uh, she has Alzheimer's, and I've been dealing with that.
Well, I'm sorry for what you're going through. My mother went through that myself, so I, I know all too well how-
You know what it's like. Yeah. So, uh, I'm just doing what I need to do to still stay in business, and I would like to continue to grow and develop my business.
Thank you.
And, uh-
Good. Councilmember Gray?
Yeah, um, let me just be real quick. Kevin, I, I took it off, you know, because I, I didn't recognize that you had not bid on it. So I don't, I guess, and I, I don't want to be a lawyer here, but I don't think that, you know, the, the, the appeal that you have into the courts, is that where it is?
No. No, no, sir. It's, it's through HUD.
Through HUD, okay.
It's through HUD, and, uh, you know, HUD is the ones that funded the project.
Okay.
Okay? And we have not yet received a final decision from the regional office in Kansas City on the complaint that I submitted with them, and that's all I'm asking, is that at least wait until we get a final answer from them, you know, before you begin to disperse some been on. Because if they do make a decision in my favor, then what?
Then you can get damages. Yeah, that's what I think. And so I originally was gonna vote no on this, but I think I will vote yes, only because you didn't bid on it, number one. And number two, if they make a ruling and this, and, and the work is started, whatever that work is, you can gain damages from that through, through HUD. So, uh, understanding that better now. I just wanted you to understand what my vote is going to be and why, because I originally was gonna vote no and wait until it was over. But if there's possibility for you to gain damages as a result of your complaint, I, I think that would probably be the best mechanism for you and probably the best way to go.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Harding?
I think I was gonna make some similar comments about since you didn't bid on it. I, knowing that now, that I'd go ahead. I don't know if you wanna make the motion or...
Yeah, I'll make the motion approved.
I'll second it.
I'll make the motion approved, because I think, I'm, I'm confident that when you get with HUD, and HUD makes its ruling, if there, if there is substantial or if there are any violations, you will be compensated for the damages.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice President Palermo?
Thank you. Mr. President, and I think, too, before we knew that, so quickly looking through the pictures that you put up there, it doesn't seem like the bidders in item 44 were in your bid, and the bidders in this, or vice versa. It seems that yours was for the tree brush clearing out part, but this might be for a greater scope? Is that what you're gathering from?
Well, it has clearing and grubbing on it. That's part of the scope of work, as well as, uh, getting, I guess, digging up different, uh, areas that had been demolition previously, to get that area prepped for, you know, whatever development is gonna go there, you know. So, um, but clearing and grubbing is part of the scope of work. And the scope of work that was on the project that I bid on last year, it's, this is also part of that same section.
So you bid on the, the tree part. This bid is the tree part and some, so it's technically a different bid that went out?
Uh, it's a, it's a different bid, but some of the same area and scope of work is under this particular project. Yes, sir.
So I know you have a complaint. I know them can last a while. So let me ask law... Bernard, I'm trying to think here what I'm even trying to ask you. But, um, so a bid was put in for part of a project, and had the bid been awarded to whatever company, would this bid that went out in 44 be less than, money-wise, what he would have got? Are you not the right person to ask?
Well, I, I can try to answer your question. Certainly, I don't have, somebody in Planning might be familiar with the scope of the work. But it appears that the first project had a scope of work, the one that he bid for and ultimately didn't receive. And then it appears that there might be some overlap between that, which in and of itself, I don't think is problematic at all. If the work wasn't done previously, then it could certainly be bid as part of the subsequent bid that he did not bid for. And as Mr. Gray points out, he has a complaint. Obviously, it sounds like we're waiting for HUD to consider that complaint, and they have the potential to award damages. And I think he also has the potential, if he doesn't like the result of what HUD, how HUD disposes of his complaint, to bring an action in the courts as well. So the, the action as far as what occurred with the last bid may very well not be resolved for some time, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. So thinking out loud, had the process worked itself out, and you got awarded the tree part of this bid, you would've got it, and this would've been separate, obviously, far less. But I guess it's something for us to keep an eye on, that if a bid does fall through, because it seems like that bid should've went back out to the bidders, but instead, it seems like it got swallowed up in a bigger bid. And I guess, I guess the planning director's here, and I just don't want to see that to happen, because then we're working backwards on why we have small companies bidding on these big projects.
Can I respond to that, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, this is my opinion, okay? Um, the bid last year that I submitted, I was a low bidder on. There was an issue with the outreach, so they rejected my bid. I appealed the, uh, the, I appealed their decision, came to the City Council, communicated why I felt that my bid should be accepted, and it wasn't, because of terminology, the understanding of what a recipient is, bidder, vendor, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? However, um, the City Planning Department, they did not award the bid. There was an intent to award to Blademaster, which hasn't been completed yet. But there was a letter sent out to Blademaster for this particular project. But because of my HUD complaint and HUD getting involved, the City Planning Department, they squashed the project. Okay? They didn't award it to anybody as of yet. However, uh, some of that same scope of work has now been put on another project. Not all of it, but some of it. And as I said, it was the section from 29th in Parker over to Blondo, 28th Street, right in there. And, um, that's what, you know, that's part of the job. So to me, as a contractor, when I see that, based upon what I had, uh, in, in my complaint, the City Planning Department, they still have those funds there, but they have a certain time to use those funds. Okay? And they're getting some of that work done on this particular project, Highland East demolition, some of the clearing and grubbing. And the reason why I'm here to oppose that is because that's part of the scope of work that I had bid on. And it's in the complaint. And it hasn't been a decision made through HUD to finalize that. If HUD had made a decision in the city's favor, okay, I wouldn't be here. I would have to go through an appeal process, you know, if I did not like the decision or whatever. However, a decision has not been made yet. And that's the most important thing. You know, if they had made a decision on it, fine. But if they don't, if they haven't made one yet, and from what I understand, a decision is coming forthright, hopefully by the end of the month or August. So just to table this particular project until the answer is made, why not? I, you know, I think that's fair.
And I appreciate it, and I think we're on the same page.
Yes, sir.
Looking back, had it been done correctly in the beginning, we wouldn't be here, unfortunately.
We wouldn't be here, you know.
And since this is a separate bid, I was willing to lay it over, but you didn't bid on it. So, uh, I think we'll be looking at these, and hopefully the smaller projects do go to companies that deserve them, and the bigger projects go to the, the bigger companies, or, you know, whoever wants to get them. So, um, I wish you luck in your HUD complaint.
I was in position, 100% self-performed that whole project. And if you go back and, if you wanna take the time, sir, to, you know, look at all the scope of work, it was a lot of trees on this particular project, covered a lot of area from last year.
I could tell by the bid amount, so, uh, thank you.
And I would just echo a little bit about what was said by Vice President Palermo's. Fortunately, we have three of us here that serve on the City Council's Planning Committee.
Mm-hmm.
So the chairman is Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding and I sit on it. We know the, the Bill Luke Cash and, and his group, and the good work that they do. And I'm sure he'll give us his accounting for why they put this bid together the way they did. And if you wanna follow up with us in a month, because we'll be meeting, um, later this month, won't we? Well, next month. We'll, we'll have met with him and get an explanation from Planning Department. He's not here today. I don't think it's fair to ask Mr. Fanslaw, the planning director, unless he's intimately familiar with how this bid was put together. He's not gonna know the answer. But we can get the answer. And I, too, wish you luck with your HUD complaint. Um, but today, since you didn't bid, I think we're, I'm gonna be supporting the motion. Okay?
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate your input, Mr. Gray. I understand why you, you know, feel that you have to, you know, that you vote that way. And, um, as you said, you know, maybe through the final decision, I'll get damages, you know, which is hard to get from the city.
Yeah. But there's something, I think your, your inclination of, this isn't right, you know, leads me to say, well, we shouldn't be in a position where people doing business with the city, or wanting to do business with the city, have these fundamental questions of fairness and how they're treated. They should know the playing field is level for everybody. And, and so we'll get you the answers.
You know, if, uh, if it wouldn't have been in reference to the, uh, issue with the outreach last year, as, uh, Mr. Gray tried to explain to the City Council, but the final decision, Mr. Durham, was your decision, and that's what it went by, you know. So if it would've been different...
With all due respect, I'm one of seven, so...
Say what now?
I'm one of seven on the council.
Yeah. Now, there was a lady that was on the council. She's not here today. Uh, but she spoke with me after that, and she felt that I should've won that. You know, she told me that face to face, you know, so...
All right. Well, thanks.
Anyway, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Approve.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
All right. I think we're on annexation now.
Yes.
Okay.
Items 55 to 62 relate to the 2020 annexation package. Ordinance is extending limits on the City of Omaha to incorporate SID 421, 451, 468, 489, 495, 502, 539, 538. A is amendment of the whole by the Planning Department for SID 538. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
So we can vote on all of them up to 61 in one vote?
Correct.
Roll call.
Oh, Mr. Festerson.
Yeah, thanks. Troy, can you come down, please? Uh, just, I wanted just to reiterate our conversation we had this morning on, on these items. I do think the annexation program being proposed this year demonstrates a measured annexation approach. Um, it is a financial positive to the city, um, and it is contiguous for city services. Um, the one remaining concern I had, though, was about trash, since that is a big issue for all citizens right now, and delays for current citizens. So I wanted to make sure that if these are adopted today, that doesn't create an additional burden on our waste management contract in the meantime, and suffer potentially the service of current residents, let alone the new residents. Um, so we talked about this this morning, and I think you have addressed that issue in the three SIDs where that is, is an issue. But if you could just summarize that for us?
Yeah, so the issue is that, um, you know, as, as we typically annex SIDs, the SIDs will terminate their solid waste contract and move over to, you, taking advantage of and using the city's solid waste removal program. Uh, what that generally entails, though, is homeowners going out and buying trash cans or buying bags, um, so that waste management can collect their solid waste. Since we're moving to the new solid waste contract in 2021, that would require those folks to go out and, uh, purchase those trash cans, purchase those trash bags, and they would ultimately almost have three solid waste haulers within one year. We wanted to try to alleviate that this year. And so there were three SIDs that we identified had SID-wide solid waste removal contracts, SID 495, 502, and 539. Uh, SID 495 requested that they pay the contract in full prior to annexation using some of their, um, cash on hand. We did authorize that, so that kinda checked the box for SID 495. The other two, SID 502 and 539, we've been working with the Law Department. We'll have resolutions to you next week, which will authorize the city to extend and continue those contracts through the end of the year, so that those residents will not be impacted by the annexation as it relates to solid waste. They'll be able to go from their current waste hauler straight into the new solid waste contract that the city will offer for 2021.
Okay. Thank you. And can you just confirm that this is, in fact, a financial positive to the city, both, both next year and over the 10-year timeframe, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so for the next issues, I just wanted to, uh, again, like usual, thank Mr. Anderson for his hard work on putting together these packages, even though some of the SIDs might be net negative. Um, he groups them together and somehow gets every director to say it's possible. So thank you for that. And I know why we do it, right? We all know why we do it. But like I brought up in pre-council last week or a couple weeks ago, uh, there's some underlying issues this year, uh, which I'm usually against annexation. That really justifies me being against annexation. One of them is COVID has set back police classes, therefore, uh, there is an exodus on police officers being in the police and fire pension board. I'm seeing more and more retire, which means there's more openings. Uh, and that class isn't gonna happen, uh, or didn't happen, and we're behind a class, which means, uh, we're gonna be lacking police officers that we desperately need during these times. Um, and again, we got a new, uh, contract moving forward with FCC, where they're gonna be asked to take on even more customers with a rollout that's heading our way. We have more, uh, parks to mow. We have so many more lane miles to take care of. Uh, with all that being said, with where we're at, um, like usual, I'm gonna be against it. So, thank you.
There's a motion and a second on items 56 to 61.
55.
Excuse me, 55 to 61. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one.
Amendment eight.
Two.
Amendment of the whole?
Yes.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to, five to one.
That was under the ordinance on public hearing. Seems like the thing to do around 6 o'clock.
Item 63, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Section 34-57, to create a penalty for those who commence excavation in city right-of-way without a permit.
The public hearing on item 63 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 64, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the City of Omaha, Group 2020-08.
Public hearing on item 64 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 65, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal on certain lots in the City of Omaha, Group 2020-09.
The public hearing on item 65 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 66, an ordinance to approve a service agreement with IDE MIA for digital fingerprinting for a term of five years in the amount of $13,028.
The public hearing on item 66 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 67, an ordinance to approve the Nebraska Crime Commission Fiscal Year 2019 Stop Violence Against Women Grant Award in the amount of $246,115.45 during the project period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021.
The public hearing on item 67 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 68 through 100, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 6:09.[1786.82]